...of the Villa Park City Council. Here by call, immediate order. Steve, will you please call the roll?
Okay, we've got Councilman, um...
Deanna, Councilman Deanna Fancinelli.
Present.
Councilwoman, Councilman Robbie Pitt.
Present.
Councilman Vince Rossini.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem, Robert Colicott.
Here.
And Mayor Bill Nelson.
Present. Uh, Councilman Pitts, will you please lead us in the place?
My honor. Place flag, hand across your heart, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to thank all of those in the audience who please silence your cellphones and turn it off if possible. Villa Park City Council staff welcomes you to this meeting and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please submit a speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. Speaker cards can be found at the interest of the city council chambers. Speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. Now, at this time, we have public comments. Any members of the public may address the council on any off agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided no action be taken on any off agenda items unless authorized by law. Comments limited to five minutes per person, thirty minutes for all comments. Do we have any public comments? Do we have any speaker cards? Any public comments?
Oh, yeah.
All right. So, we'll go right into the budget study session. Then, Steve, will you please give the budget report?
Okay. What we have today is the first of our budget workshops on the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget. This is a part of a process. We've already had a budget finance subcommittee that met in late April. Subsequently, we had a human resources subcommittee, or committee meeting that met May 5th, and this is the first full meeting of the council. So, today, we'll be presenting, and it is simply a presentation for dialogue. It is no formal votes required. It's to get input, get direction from the council, and answer questions that you may have. We will have some meetings, um, there's a subsequent meeting planned for June 13th, and then final budget adoption would be at the end of June. So, with that, we've asked Michelle Danaher, our finance director, to give a presentation. She'll walk us through. Again, the point today is to get dialogue and give us direction. There are no formal votes required and no formal action of the council. It's simply to get priorities, discussions, anything you want clarification on, to get you information so when we do the final budget, you're in a position to do so. So, with that, I'll hand it over to Michelle, who'll be making a PowerPoint presentation.
All right. Well, just to give everybody a background, just in case you haven't been through a budget process yet, um, we start with our working draft, and we go, we have a meeting with the Budget and Finance Committee, and we show them our original baseline, and from there, we discuss, receive input, and then we refine that draft. Next, what we did is, as Steve mentioned, on May 5th, we had a Human Resources Committee meeting, and we talked about our draft salary resolution, and changes and recommendations made from the HR Committee have been presented in this actual draft, hence why you got it about 1:00 on Fridays, right after our meeting. This officially kicks off our first full city council and resident budget study session to discuss any changes, any ideas that you have, recommendations. The next meeting will be, as Steve mentioned, on June 13th.
Michelle, can I stop you for a second? What you sent us, you sent us the budget, but email when it was posted, and I have a memorandum of May 5th with it. So, this is what you sent us, but this is sitting up here, says "May 5th," but it's different.
Right. Um, what we had, the budget studies, I mean, the HR Committee met on Friday morning, and we got direction from, on a recommendation to push through, through the majority of the budget. Nothing changed dollar-wise, so the only thing that changed is how we presented the information in the salary resolution. So, because of that, I have given you the revised, I was under the impression that the information was to be presented in two schedules, and it was requested to be in one, so we just cleaned it up.
Okay, just want to make sure I have the right one, because the one that was emailed to us has on number three, has a $54,800 merit increase, and the one that was put up here says $21,000.
We'll walk through that. That's...
I'll be walking through that.
Okay, so it is different. So, am I to know the one you emailed?
The one that we'll be working off of is the one that's in front of you, right there.
Okay, what about the actual budget, then?
No change.
The numbers are accurate. It's just all about presentation of where the, what was included in the $54,000.
Clarification.
The $54,000 included things besides the straight merit money.
Right.
So, that's what we clarified. But again, she'll make sure it's a question.
I just want to work with the right documents.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Good, thank you, thank you for asking.
The majority of this presentation is going to go through the thick budget that you have. The assumption letter, you know, is just kind of giving you a heads up so you can read through it and kind of get the bullet points. The salary resolution is, again, just recommended from the HR, and I just, it was a formatting issue, so that's for your review further. So, we were talking about the second draft. If so needed, last year, we did not have the June meeting on the second budget study session, because there wasn't a ton of changes to the document that we presented at the May 10th meeting, I believe it was, last year, so we didn't have the June meeting. So, there's that discretion, again, with council if there's a future meeting before the adoption on June 27th. Next, how we, we start with a budget is that we begin with the audited financial statements from the previous year. So, obviously, those are tried and true. The auditors have given their blessing, saying these numbers are legitimate, let's start here. So, we do what we call a zero-based budget, and we estimate the year-end revenues and expenditures for '16-'17, the year that we're in right now, and from there, we will estimate, start looking at the proposed revenues for '17-'18. We put those numbers in, and then we prepare our salary and benefit cost impacts, and that's what we took to the HR Committee, and again, it's in here, in, in the detail. The, the next step that we do is we look at our standing contracts and our operating costs, and we start baseline, like, what do we need to provide the, the city services that we have now, and we start there, and anything added, based on council approval, based on recommendations throughout the year, we add, we add into this budget. From there, we review our necessities for '17-'18, and our last, our meeting with, when was it, in February? I believe it was in February, where we went over our strategic goals and figured out what capital projects were the hot buttons for this year. Those have been put in here, and again, toward the end, we'll discuss and we'll get your input if the capital, you know, is, that's usually the big item that affects our budget, because they're usually one-time or project-driven, and that's where we'll, we can get your direction from there. Okay, next slide. Our goal, obviously, is to adopt a balanced budget, and what a balanced budget in government is, when you're looking at your recurring revenue, so revenue that you get every year, and it should be equal to or exceed your recurring operating expenses, because you're going to have some, some years, perfect example, we have the disaster, the storm drain, right? And that's not something that's going to happen every year, however, we have to pay for it, and we use our, and we use our reserves for, our available fund balance for that. So, when, when we budget, we make sure that our recurring revenues are greater or equal to our operating. So, that's kind of the key that we focus on. Just to go over, we have our general fund, which is the one that we need to focus on, because the general fund is what takes care of the city. We have special revenue funds where we receive a specific revenue that takes care of specific expenditures, and you can only spend the money in certain ways. So, our gas tax fund, A to cities, traffic safety, Measure M, they have limitations on how you can use the money, so that's not for everyday consumption in the, the city operating. Sewer maintenance district, that is the Sycamore pump station where we have an assessment for those homes there to pump up the, the sewage, and that is a self standalone fund, so the revenues that come in provide the, the money to pay for the expenditures, whether we need to replace a sewer pump or whatnot. AQMD money, that is money that, Air Quality Management District, anytime, for a layman's term, is anytime we can get people to either walk or ride their bikes or use a better economic vehicle to just reduce smog, is kind of what that's for. This year, we, we have a couple areas that we're, we're thinking that this money can be used, where we've been saving up our money for it, couple, uh, just to kind of jump ahead, bus stops, that's, that's an area that we, we've kind of looked into, but based on council's direction, one of the ideas is what we possibly could use it for is the DG portion of the disaster that we received, the, the trails, all the DG flooded out, and we might be able to use some of that money to offset our 6%, as we talked about FEMA, that FEMA takes care of 75% of eligible costs, and the state takes care of the remaining 18%, and then the city is responsible for 6%. We might be able to use some of our AQMD money to be our city match. So, we're trying to find as many possible ways to reduce this, the storm damage on the city's general fund. So, that's one area that we're looking into right now. COPS fund, that money, we get about $100,000 every year for frontline law enforcement, and we use that for our SRO position. California Law Enforcement Equipment Program Fund, that fund was in 9/11, right after 9/11, there was a, a grant that gave all cities money to take care of any type of frontline equipment that for, that could be used for law enforcement to prevent a terrorist attack or, you know, just to beef up, whether it be for an EOC or any type of radios or anything law enforcement-related, and we, I think we have, in this budget, maybe $500 left. We've completely expended our monies, we used it for the 800 megahertz, for the 800 CCCS system upgrade, bringing us into the current century for radio commands throughout the county. Last is our cap, or, not last, our capital improvements fund, that is the fund that we use for reimbursing any type of cattle project, whether it's a grant, whether it's FEMA monies, what type of monies that we can use for a infrastructure project or something to improve the city. And then, we have our sewer improvement fund, which is, represents the money that comes in on our taxes, for residents' taxes, that money's used to improve the sewer infrastructure. Those are our funds. The main departments that we have, obviously, administration, we have public safety, public works, that takes care of our maintenance throughout the city. Community development is the planning and engineering, code enforcement transfers out, and then capital improvement, like we talked about, it's for all the capital improvements that we do within the city. The divisions that are represented, we have city council, city manager, finance, city attorney, support services, that supports the basic needs of the city, law enforcement, emergency preparedness includes our CERT program and any money that we can use to help out there. Public works takes care of our guys in the back, any type of city maintenance that goes along. Street maintenance, we have that division, no yawning. Sewer, sewer pump maintenance, that's the specific division with, that represents the Sycamore Circle. Storm drain is, the storm drain maintenance that we do in PDS, tracking Civic Center, is anything that goes along with our building here, anything with the council chambers, city sewer maintenance, again, that's the money, that's the division that takes care of the sewer infrastructure. Community preservation is basically our code enforcement and planning, self-explanatory, engineering, self-explanatory, building, same, and then our capital projects. So, again, these are how we all segregate our, our budget, and here, I've just shown what a typical page looks like. The depart, um, on the far right, the green, is our general fund. It shows what fund is represented in that source. So, if we have multiple funds in, let's say, this administration budget is only general fund, but if it were, let's say, law enforcement, we would have a COPS fund, we would have the CLEEP fund, we would have the general fund, and traffic safety. Those would be funds that would be, you'd be see highlighted into the far right, that would be responsible for funding that expenditure form. Far left, yellow, is the administration, right there, highlighted, that's the department that repri, is represented. Division below it, this one is specifically the city manager in orange, and city clerk, so those expenditures that relate to the city manager and city clerk. And then, lastly, you'll see the, the purple is the actual account. So, this is just kind of helpful for you to be able to read, you know, if you, if you choose to read the budget. This is how you would follow it through. So, now to the fun stuff. We have the budget before you, and this is a synopsis of page one of the budget detail that you have. So, our general fund, obviously, is the most important and flux that we need to look into. The revenues we're anticipating are a little over 3.3 million, and the total city funds is, is for, just for a reference point, is 5.7, and that's, that's the revenue that we are anticipating as of the budget date of, uh, May 9th is what, we haven't heard anything else, this is, this is where we would sit. The estimated expenditures, now here is where we break out the operating versus the capital. So, the operating is 3.1, and again, that is below the 3.3 million of operating revenues, and that's kind of why we break it out to highlight, to show you that, in the note, you'll see that the budget is balanced, because the general fund operating expenditures of 3.1 are $187,000 lower than the operating expenditures. So, that's yay for us, that's what we want to look for. Now, the capital for the general fund is $933,000, and that represents, that money is pulled out of our available fund balance, okay? So, um, total general fund expenditures is 4 million, and total city funds is 6 million. You will see that the bottom line we have is the beginning available fund balance for June 30, ending from, or, the beginning...
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry. The beginning available fund balance for June 30, 2017, is $492,000. Now, that is encompassing everything that I have given you in this budget document. If nothing changed, we would have a remaining balance of $492,000 that was not budgeted for. Does that make sense? Like, if, in, in real life, your retained earnings. So, total city funds is $922,000.
I have a question on that.
Sure.
This is the general fund balance at the end of 2017, it's $492.
Yes.
But what is the $922?
That's for all city funds, that's for the special revenue funds and capital project funds, everything, if you took all of them together, their available fund balance. So, if you look at...
Not including reserves?
Correct.
But what would the other $500,000 be?
It would be your, your sewer fund, it would be your CLEEP fund, it would be your...
Okay. I spent special funds.
Right.
A special fund, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so it's like the bottom line.
Everything except for the reserves.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Right. Okay. Next slide. Okay, so, the salary and benefit assumptions, and this, these are normally encompassed through page 5 through 37 of your budget document, however, when we do this first one, based on direction from council, we don't spread it. We don't spread it until everybody's, you know, gives a thumbs up, and then I'll spread it, because it's a lot of work and not needed. So, the pocket of money that we have talked about, and this is where the, the salary resolution that you have, that was placed on the dais, is, is what we're talking about. And HR met on May 5th, and what was recommended was a budgeted pool for merit increases of 3%. Now, how we broke it down to make it clearer is, if you look at the salary resolution in front of you, you'll see that the bottom of the first table has a 3% merit pool of That is broken down by taking the entire pool of employees, part-time and full-time, and taking 3% of their salaries. Part of the increase for total, for total expenditures in salaries is based on, was it, a meet, two meetings ago, that code enforcement time was increased, and so the building inspectors' code enforcement hours have been budgeted in, and that's, that's already in here. So, that's not part of the 3% increase. Does that make sense? There, if you look at the table, the building inspectors' time includes that additional eight hours a week for code enforcement, so that's already taken into account. Another recommendation with, through the HR Committee was to eliminate one of our paid internship positions, and that's a savings of about $13,000.
So, we're reducing an employee, we're reducing a part-time employee?
Yes. The, the, the purpose of our first, when we brought on the paid intern at, because in the '16-'17 budget, interns were not budgeted, okay? So, those positions were not budgeted for that year. However, we had one employee go on maternity leave, and we're so small that when one person leaves, it makes a big hole. So, at that point, the city manager at the time had requested a intern to cover while that individual was on maternity leave, and that position was budgeted for. So, now that we don't have that employee, it...
I think we're, the word intern is kind of throwing myself off and might throw some of the public off. It, it's an employee, it's a, it's a temporary employee.
Right.
Correct. And I think that's more of a proper word than an intern. I think most people think interns are not paid, or, but, that maybe we should be calling them part-time employees, because that's, they're temporary employees is what they are. So, that's just something, because it's throwing me off when I hear intern, because they are an employee, they answer the phones, they were here 30 hours, some of them were here 40 hours a week doing that, so...
During, yeah, during transition, we did have beefed up staff when, when our, both our executive assistants at the time left, and then our city manager left, and so we did, we did require more time during those periods.
So, Councilman, if you were to look at your original resolution, you were asking how we were for $54,000.
Right.
If you add those three, all those items, which is what the Human Resources Committee asked, is we itemized those out, so that $21,000, $18,000, $13,400, and $1,000, all adds up to $54,000. So, that adds up, so it's just a breakout differently. The numbers don't change, it's just simply breaking it out. So, I wanted you to kind of be able to reference back and forth how the resolution changed. So, the numbers don't change, it's just how they were broken out for purposes of presentation.
Right, and the $54,000 also was, we did not have a full, or, not a full-time, excuse me, a office assistant, and we are hiring for that position. So, that's, that is in that, that 54, so...
What about the assistant city manager that the HR department discussed last year? When Bill and I were on there, we had, because we didn't have a succession plan, that was one of the issues that the council even decided that we would have that room to have an assistant city manager, so we don't end up in the position that we just ended up in, because we don't have that. If for some reason Steve moves on, it happened, you know, we do not have a succession plan, and we had taken that into account last year, so we can put that on to table and discussion, but that was a big discussion last year for that, as well as, as well as it was when we were doing the hiring process for the city manager now. So, we can put that on as a discussion at the end.
It's not built in at this point, but it certainly, that's like you say, it's something that the council wants to discuss. So, the staffing pattern would consist of current staffing, but one project-based specific, part-time intern-type position that works on projects, and we would have the office assistant that would work as well for 25 hours, so that's, we don't have a position, an assistant city manager position built in.
Another increase here is for the overtime pool for our maintenance staff. There was quite a few call-outs this year, and just, it, it's just assumption that we'll have some...
That's a placeholder, obviously, if we don't, we don't use it, we don't need it.
Right.
That may be the case.
Right.
But we need to be able, like, as evidenced in January, we don't want to say, well, I don't have the money for it, we can't do it, so we need to be able to respond to emergencies, so that's what it is.
Exactly. There are no COLA increases.
And that is $1,000, not 1,000 hours.
Thank you.
We had a clarification that caught on us.
Another good recommendation. I look at these numbers way too often, they just, they mean something to me, but not always explained well, so, thank you. And then, just as a note, employees have been paying their 7% per contribution. Back in the day, there were, a couple years ago, we brought, I think it was the '14-'15 fiscal year, was when the first year that we were 7% whole, the employees were, the city used to subsidize some of that, so not anymore. All employees laid out, so, just a...
Michelle, a question.
Yeah.
The administrative analyst, who is that today?
That's Kim Chodry.
Okay. So, there would be another position added?
No, there is, there is no, there would be no position added at this point, as though it's current staffing levels.
Okay.
So, we have two part-time intern types, I go back and forth. Those two people, we would have basically the combination of one of them, as opposed to two.
Okay.
And so, that's where we are at, everyone, every, everything else, staff-wise, will stay the same, including the additional hours for the code enforcement.
So, only two full-time employees, that's yourself and Kim.
And two maintenance, Mike and Rich.
But for the office, only two full-time employees.
Right. The office assistant is, would be, it's budgeted currently as 25 hours a week. So, that was, that's currently what we don't have as of today's date, you don't see a office assistant, and that's what we've built into that. Okay. Initial thoughts, and again, I have references on this, if you want to follow along in your budget, the end of each bullet point kind of shows you what page of the budget document that we're discussing. So, the initial thoughts on our revenues right now, property tax is, is obviously our largest revenue source, and based on the county projections, we're expecting a 4% increase, because everybody keeps their home so nice, which is fantastic here, which is, which is about a $95,000 increase, and that pretty much legitimizes the whole increase in our revenue source for the general fund right there. Muni Services is our sales tax auditor, and they do a projection every quarter for us, and the most recent one that they have for the city of Villa Park specifically is a 3% increase of $7,000. The, the next, next bullet here is talking about our franchise fees. We have franchise fees for utilities that do work within our city, and any, any users there. We have for Southern Califor, we have Southern California Edison, we have Southern California Gas, Republic, Time Warner, uh, Charter Communications, oh, no, not, it's not Charter anymore.
Spectrum.
Spectrum, thank you. They change all the time. So, we receive revenue from that source in franchise fees, and because Villa Park is a solar-powered city, I mean, we, if you look at Bill's map on the side of his, his cubicle, if you will...
Workstation.
Yeah, it's, it's full of red dots, so we're going solar here, so we're not using quite as much electricity as SE would normally give us a percentage of that, so it's, it's something to note. I know they're small dollar amounts to you, but they, they make a big difference in our little budget, so just trying to give you an idea of what's, what's changing from the status quo. And then, on the last bullet here is we're talking about the, the new Road Repair Accountability Act, and this is in our gas tax fund. We get highway users' tax fees for, using for right-of-way, any improvements of rightways or streets, and so we use that money when we do street improvements. So, now that the Road and Recovery Act of 2017 that was just put in, was just voted on, we're expecting $49,000 this year. We will actually see a, a large jump in 7, 18, 19. So, this is just the, the beginning stages of it, so...
So, will we receive the money in this year, that we'll actually receive?
No, no, 17-'18. 17-'18, this, we're assuming a $49,000 increase, the 18-'19 year is when we're going to see, I want to see...
We anticipate getting a check, though.
It's a partial year of $49,000, so six months, partial year, that will receive.
Yeah.
I mean, assuming it doesn't get repealed or something happen along those lines.
Is it about $136,000?
Hundred, when it's fully implemented.
When it's fully implemented, yes.
Yeah, but it's a step up, because you've got partial year implementation, and it sort of catches up in arrears, and that's, again, what would be caution there, this is all estimates based on current utilization, and those sort of, you know, we don't know if those estimates are accurate, so we'll have to wait and see.
You know, Senator Bill gave, I have to bring it in, gave, when I went up in Sacramento and he spoke with us, he gave us a spreadsheet.
That's, that's what this number is for the...
And the numbers aren't, aren't these. And the numbers aren't, aren't these. They were lower. And I remember, I'm going to pull that from, um, my notebook from when I went up there because I.
The first estimate was lower.
It was, and that's what he gave us and that was only one week before it was, before it was passed, so.
We're going based on Department of Finance estimates, so that's.
I'd be cautious because.
Well, no, we, like I say, I.
We all sat in there and I looked at Villa Park and it was pennies. I mean, it, it, it was not.
You are correct. The first estimate that came out, um, Michael Coleman is the one that I get my information from and legitimately probably the smart, one of the smartest men I've ever met. And he has, he has done an update, like a twenty-page update almost every other week. And, um, this is the, the most tried and true number that we have received. So that's the number that I was basing it on. Next here, we're talking about, um, on page three of your budget is that, um, we receive reimbursement from different sources and, um, the TAF rehabilitation project is, um, occurring this fiscal year. So we're assuming that we will get that grant reimbursement in next year. That's three hundred and seventy-eight thousand. FEMA, um, we've been discussing this back and forth, um, that project, we are anticipating, these are based on our expenditure numbers too. So, I mean, depending on how much it eventually costs, these are our top estimates right now. Um, six hundred and ninety-two thousand from FEMA, um, the state is, um, we're assuming a hundred and seventy-three thousand from them. Those are combined and I was talking with the mayor today and, um, yes, it is the federal government, but based on our last meeting that we had, um, on Wednesday with the FEMA and OES team, as long as we have our documentation and we move forward and quickly give them what they need, reimbursement can be expedited. So, um.
Michelle, I'm trying to follow, this is the document we're talking about, right? I'm trying to follow you on this unnumbered, uh, document.
Yours is unnumbered? I apologize.
Okay.
Down at the bottom right?
See, face.
Mine, mine has numbers on it.
Down at the bottom right.
Oh, uh, looks like it didn't copy.
Oh, you can have mine.
Okay. Well, mine's got notes.
Oh, okay.
But also I'm trying to follow you along on this. I don't see these numbers that you're referring to.
Okay, for FEMA, we're on the capital improvement right here. So these are all combined in. So that one point three million is the three seventy-eight, six ninety-two, plus the one seventy-three, plus the one oh seven.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Well, if you could try to keep us oriented where we are on this document.
Okay, um, on the, the end of each bulletin?
Yeah, I see that. Uh-huh, yeah. Like I said, I didn't have a number on the bottom of the copy that I was provided.
I'm, I'm speaking to the footnotes and so if you go off to the left.
Okay. Well, if you can describe if you're speaking to the footnotes so we can.
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, Steve and Michelle, was any, um, are we anticipating any insurance funding on the storm drain over and above this?
We haven't, we haven't built in at that point because we don't know. And that's going to be sort of a hit and miss. I mean, a lot of it's where we stand on this. FEMA has indicated that some things we are including in our costs may not be reimbursable. Other things we weren't, like Michelle's continued work on it, is eligible for reimbursement. So, so things may change on the numbers and we don't really know. And the insurance one is something we didn't feel that we should be counting on at this point.
Right.
Um, so if we get it, we get it. But, and we're, we're pursuing that. The claim's in. They've been involved. They've been engaged with us. But we need to be careful that we're not counting on money we don't have. So we haven't built anything in here, but we are proceeding and per council direction on the claim. So I guess that's the best answer. So abundance of caution, we haven't put it in as a estimated number, but it is a claim. It's active. I get a monthly report. They're all, all over it. And, uh, we're aware of it.
In the event that we do get insurance money, would that count towards our six percent or would that just reduce our FEMA reimbursement?
FEMA reimbursement.
Yeah, they were pretty clear about that.
Yeah.
Okay, so it really doesn't matter.
They actually have copies of our insurance policy. They have, uh, have copies of our claim. They have copies of.
Birth certificate.
Our birth certificate, our firstborn child. I'm not kidding, it is.
Yeah, the binder is about this big.
But they have asked for all that material and they are very specific about the insurance with, because we were saying, hey, with insurance, and they said, well, good, I hope you get insurance because we want you because it's going to reduce our contribution to you guys. They're, they're all, this is what they do for a living. They're all over it. So our last person came from Louisiana, the inspect, the FEMA person, so she's pretty much been through it, it's all.
Where they didn't have insurance. So they're looking at us, knowing we do.
But they're very impressed what we have, et cetera. It's just, it's going to be a process of what we can include and there are some things that we may be able to be included in our claim that are, I want to say, soft costs that might not necessarily be hard dollars out the door. So we may be able to claim in our sixty percent things that aren't going to require additional expenditures, things we've already spent. So that's sort of why we've been capturing time, doing a very good job and appreciate the council's help, getting the pictures and doing all those things.
And along those lines, Barry's here and he has been super helpful and very accurate in his details of what he performed and.
She actually complimented his billing and said it was the most comprehensive billing from a vendor. Seriously, she said it was the most comprehensive billing, the most comprehensive billing that she'd ever seen.
And he, yeah.
But she had questions.
Yes.
Hopefully I got them all answered today.
You did. I, I think, I think you hit a home run. So, thank you. You've been very helpful and made this process, at least for me, very simple in the sense of obtaining and, well, I mean, I have no idea what these people are doing, but like, all these load trucks and I'm like, okay, I'm sure you know what you're doing, but I appreciate that. So, um, the, the last point, um, on page three, so if you go down to our COPS fund, you will see, um, that we received an additional, uh, twenty thousand dollars, um, regarding a growth factor. And this is something that we're not budgeting for because we've actually gotten it two years in a row, even though I don't think it's a trend. But, um, hopefully we'll get another growth factor this year. But, um, that additional twenty thousand dollars, um, is super helpful in this fiscal year because we have another year of summer school that, um, that will cover for our SRO. So that's kind of a little bonus that we, um, are taking.
So one of the things I want to say is Michelle and I have, in estimating and doing our budget, we have estimated with sort of the assumption, estimate your revenue's low and your expenditure's high and you've got a safe budget that way. So that's sort of the approach he's taken. So again, not including it in here. If we get it, we're in better shape. If we had budgeted for it, we didn't get it, then we're in worse shape. So we don't want to come to you and say, well, we spent that twenty thousand we didn't get reimbursed for or have money for. That's more of a problem. I'd rather be able to come to you and say, we got twenty thousand dollars. What do you want to do? That's sort of the approach we're taking. So from a budgetary perspective, that's like insurance money and those things. That's what, you'll see a trend that we're doing there and Michelle's followed through.
Okay, so that's, that takes care of the revenues. Um, now we'll be going to the expenditures and variations that, um, I just want to change, explain some changes. On page five, if you follow, um, on the footnote, um, there'll be some increases, obviously, based on the direction of council to provide cell phones for all city council members and continued professional development because that's key for our city to be involved and aware of what's going on. So, um, those two increases, about fifty-five thousand dollars. Fifty-five hundred dollars, sorry. I've been looking at these numbers too long. The, the next bullet, um, you'll go to, uh, page seven, which, um, is the city manager, city clerk. And these are all based on the assumption letter that you have. So this is kind of just a regurgitation for anyone, um, in the audience or, um, at home. These are kind of the, the, the big-ticket items that, or not the big-ticket items, the items that are different from this fiscal year that, um, we want to bring to council's attention. With having the city manager leave, um, you'll, you're going to see a decrease, uh, or an increase in salary from last year's actual and you're going to see a decrease in the contract services. And because we don't have the salary spread, you don't see that right now. I'm just letting you know that that, you're going to, if you, once we put the salary numbers in, you're going to go, oh my gosh, why do our, you know, city manager expenditures go way through the roof? Well, it's because we had an interim city manager, which was a contractor. So you don't, there, it's not in salaries, it's below in contract services. So that's, um, a variation, um, in the city manager, city clerk division and along with, um, the election costs. We don't have an election this year, so there's a savings there.
I can make a, a comment here. I don't, we're not seeing a savings of seven thousand dollars. We don't have an election, so the expense isn't there, so I, this, we're not saving any money because the, it's, we don't want to not have an election. It's just not an election year to have it, so I'm not.
It, it's budget speak, the dollar's lower.
It's budget speak, but it's.
You call it a decrease or a non-expenditure, but it's.
But it's not, it's a little misleading that we're saving some money for something that we wouldn't spend.
Would you prefer decrease as the reduction?
When we get done, it's just, it's a comment, we're going to go.
And I think that's, unfortunately, government budgeting is a lot of misnomers and it is really difficult to follow, but I, I think.
I follow it, but the, the general public doesn't. So that's the, I don't need you to change it. We'll wait till the end if there's.
Okay. And the, the next page we'll go to is page nine. And that's the finance budget and we are budgeting for potential single audit. And what that means is, um, when a government agency receives more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal money, it triggers a single audit, which is an additional audit based on federal guidelines, OMB circular, that has to be followed. So potentially next year, if not next year, the following year, we will have a single audit. So we're planning for, um, it, for, uh, the fiscal year ending seventeen, eighteen. So that's the increase of four thousand there. The, um, next page is page eleven. The city attorney, um, fees which we've already discussed and council's already made, um, approval for is an increase in their salary of, or it's not salary, their, um, costs of four thousand dollars. Moving along, um, support services. There, there's a, there's a myriad of, um, changes here. Animal control costs and, poor Steve being a guru, has, has, uh, working on it, has gone to the meetings and, um, we're still in discussions. The increase was significant for the city. And, um, I don't, Steve can speak to it.
We are approaching the county about it, the number of cities. I mean, it's just unfortunate, uh, that their costs are going up based on actuals and we've recommended, uh, the cities have. They've dropped their number, but it's still higher than last year. It's a double-digit, uh, percentage increase, unacceptable. Um, and we are working with them. It is a conversation still being had and there's another, next meeting is May thirteenth, uh, with it. It is a small number for us, but for instance, for Anaheim, it's five hundred thousand dollars in their increase. So it's huge for a larger city. So we're, we're able to, uh, get on the, the coattails of some of the larger cities and, and, you know, to our advantage. I know how the budget was put together and I think we have a very good opportunity to reduce it. I get phone calls like, please don't come to the meeting. Anyway, and, and phone calls from the cities, other cities saying, remember you're on the city side now. But anyway, bottom line, there are some expenses that we believe that they can reduce and I think we're going to see a decreased number there. It is still not a number that I'm really comfortable with. Um, other cities are approaching it in different manners. Uh, they are, one city has already decided they're going to increase fees. I won't do that until I, I, I won't bring that to you because I still think there's room for reducing expenditures. So until we reduce, I'm not going to come and offer fee increases. So I know a very large city has already agendized a fee increase. So, uh, I, you just be, be assured that we're, that's a discussion in, in, so, uh, it is a, a work in progress.
Yeah, the, you're referring to animal control. I'm, I trust. Yeah. So from four years ago, we've, we've gone from, uh, we've basically quadrupled the cost for animal control in four years.
Part of that was, is that we had a credit at one point in time. So we had collected money back in the day and so it's, we, we had been reducing the credit and.
The way it works is for all the license fees you get, you get credit for it. The city gets against your gross expenditures. So if you collect, if, now the city of Villa Park has a very high compliance rate with licenses. The average compliance rate for licenses in this country is less than fifty percent. We're in excess of eighty to ninety percent in Villa Park because we just have very good compliance. People pay for their dog licenses specifically. Uh, so what had happened was there was some, uh, previous activity on business license and there was a, a restitution issue that happened in the past. So the city got credit for that revenue and was sort of working against the credit. So if you were to look at that, the expenses were going up, but they were not going up quadrupling. They were going up, but the, the revenues were holding it down artificially. So now we've worked off that credit, now we're working against it and now we have to do everything we can to control their expenditures.
Even two years ago was thirty thousand, five sixty-five, now we're looking at.
Yeah, I think two years ago is when the year it worked it off. That was the last of the years.
Yeah, it's still, it's.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a lot, right? It's a huge increase.
Two-thirds increase, yeah.
What kind of feedback are you getting? I mean, what, what's the justification? I, I mean, I, I'm sitting here, I, I'm, I'm stunned. I'm.
Well, you have, you have with animal control, a very different sort of, now you have fourteen cities and not all fourteen look at it the same way. For instance, Lake Forest is saying, just increase our services, give us more, you know, give us more, we'll pay. Send us the bill. Anaheim, well, some cities such as, I, I won't name them because it just doesn't, but some cities say, just send us the bill, make sure nobody shows up at the diocese complaining about it and make sure you just live within our budget, not too big an increase. And other cities are really tight. So, um, the, the, the increases are because the counties experienced a severe, significant amount of criticism on their staffing levels, significant, you know, positions being held, you know, et cetera. So what they're doing is they're trying to increase up. And part of it is because of their union negotiations, quite candidly, they've negotiated some increases for their staff that were really not animal control management's responsibility, but union responsibility and, and the management of the, of the county. So that's sort of one of the discussions we're having with them about how those costs are going around and what sort of input we would be having.
Also, the, there is built into there, um, we're paying for the new facility. I mean, everybody's paying a portion of it. Our portion is five thousand and some change, you know, for, um, each year to pay off our portion for Villa. I mean, it's a new facility and the new facility was needed, so.
This council took an aggressive approach when that credit ran out.
Right.
I mean, we, I was down there. We took a tour. We had Todd Spitzer come in and talk to us and we were getting those bills monthly. We were astonished. Because we wanted to know why they had two accounting systems. They were, they were two accounting systems, so they were trying to merge the two. So all of a sudden our bill went up to thousands of dollars and we wanted to know where, we, we had them show us where they were. Um, it didn't come easy.
No.
But finally they did show us, but that's because we didn't let up. Not that we agree with it, but we made them show us.
And one of the things they've done is transition and candidly, one of the jumps that happened two years ago is they used to operate on a modified accrual basis on their accounting. So in other words, if they billed somebody for a license, they gave us credit for revenue. All right? Now they didn't collect the revenue, guess what? They had to come back and bill us because they didn't collect the revenue. So that's sort of, now they've gone to a cash basis. So a cash basis, they get revenue, they record it against their revenue. And that was one of the changes we, when I was still back over there, that we pushed into. But that met with a lot of resistance. Um, and that's, that was not an easy transition. It is, it is a lot of, unfortunately, you have a lot of non, non-payment on stuff and so you have a lot of bad debt. People don't follow, but they're very aggressive. Again, Villa Park is a wonderful compliant rate. The residents are really good about paying, but that's not typical.
But they stepped up, they've also stepped up in for, in code enforcement too with that too. By having eyeballs into your backyard within the cities.
Well, that's one thing. But I would, I would give you just as a point of reference, Santa Ana has about a thirteen percent licensing compliance rate versus the eighty to ninety percent that Villa Park has. So that's sort of, it kind of puts it in perspective. Now, one of the things is we're making sure is their, Santa Ana's costs don't get charged at Villa Park.
Right, yeah.
So that's sort of where we're.
What period of time is it going to take to pay off the new facility?
It's a ten-year, uh, commitment and the county, at any time, cities can pay off in full upfront. A Heintje Beach, Lake Forest, uh, have already paid. It's up to them. Uh, or you, it's amortized over ten years. The interest rate that you'll pay is the interest that the county would otherwise receive in the general, in their, their general treasury pool that Sherry Fried and Rick runs. So they're charging you basically what they would be gaining or nothing on that. But the county, the cities at any time have the option to pay upfront with no interest expense or let it pay out at the interest rate that they would otherwise be receiving.
But we vote, we voted to not to.
Right, it was like two hundred dollars a year.
Yeah.
And, and at any time you can change that. It's not a.
You can pay, is there no early payment?
There's no early payment penalty. There's just no, it's up to whoever you want to do it.
Does the, uh, does animal control look at the actual cost of the services that they provide? Let's say if, no, uh, for example, uh, I suspect that. Let's say if no, for example, I suspect that their cost per licensed pet or per pet here in Villa Park is probably lower than it is in many other cities.
They look at the they just finishing a fee study at this point, they do a fee study every two years.
I mean, the how much do they actually spend on supporting on providing animal control services in Villa Park versus how much they spend on providing animals for Santa Ana?
They don't they don't control like an animal control officer, we don't have an animal control officer assigned to Villa Park. We're in a regional system, so they have officers that cover a regional area. So what they do, their cost fee studying is based on that overall system of what an average is going to play out to be. So they don't cover city by city because they don't offer they don't assign officers to city to city. So it is part of a regional system and that's how they calculate it.
And and part of it, I mean, the the reports that they give us when they we get the invoice is that they'll say, okay, you've had what they call five night stays. And five night stays is when a stray from Villa Park is collected and it's however long it takes our residents to get there, it could be four, five, six, seven days. And then that cost is attributed to us. And they have they have this, I mean, let me tell you, their spreadsheets are, you think mine are bad, they're bad. They're huge.
What they do is they track, so if a res the difficulty, the animals don't know boundaries. So if an orange, I'm going to say an animal that escapes or runs away from orange is picked up in Villa Park and it's not licensed, Villa Park gets charged for it. They have no other way of knowing, there's no unless it's shipped and they can assign it back. But a large number of animals aren't, unfortunately, there's a lot of non compliant licensed and you know, unlicensed animals. Probably roughly fifty percent of them out there running around aren't. So that's one of the issues that they have is it's very difficult to track city by city. If we have a known animal, for instance, if an animal's picked up here that is returned to the animal owner here, the owner's going to pay the full amount of the stay. So that would not then be charged to the city. So it's really typically the strays. And what we get here is based on a percentage too. So we get a lot of, believe it or not, coyote calls that they respond to, rattlesnake calls that we respond to, wild animal park, and they respond to them. They'll deal with rattlesnakes, they'll deal with coyotes if they're aggressive. In fact, I had one that just the other day, I spent a considerable amount of time with a resident who one coyote had had, I guess, what you call pups or whatever in their backyard. So we had to get fishing, we even had fishing game out here to talk to him about it and see what we could deal with. So it's it's based on the average number of activities that you have in your area.
Thank you.
Okay, along those lines, additional I T support and that we have put all of your electronic devices and your phones and whatnot to you or that council is eligible for access to that. And there's a cost to that. We also had our P T A F is our property tax administration fee. And there was a one time settlement this in sixteen seventeen. So we had about a $9,000 reduction in the current year expenditures, but it's not going to happen again next year, so that you'll see a variance in the the costs there.
Michelle.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the I T services.
Yes.
We're increasing that by $8,000, is that the telephones and?
That and additional service.
We also added licenses for the remember, we added email addresses for all our.
Committee members.
Members and whatnot. So we had to buy a few extra licenses to get because we have a very limited number. So that's all included in there, included help support for the phone.
Is our website and things like that support through that same company?
No, website is granted, no, no.
Granted?
No.
No, websites.
We'll be coming to the board to the council in May with an upgrade, what we're trying to do with our website because we believe it needs to be dealt with. Because our assist our website is sort of not state of the art.
Are you getting the services that you require from this I T firm?
I believe so.
Yeah, we do, we we are, you know, we're a small market for them. So, you know, I mean, I'll be honest, we don't get probably the same attention that some others might get, but we get what we need, I think, and they've been they've been responsible.
But the fee increases is there, are they increasing their fees?
No, 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 it's because we're asking for more service.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that and we don't have to compete that with other I T companies or anything, their whole contract? Compete that?
Um, well, it's a it's it's it would be like a subcontract. So because it was it's within the professional services and.
One one of the things we'll be looking into, Mayor's mentions too, is we're there's a lot of sort of evergreen contracts that we have in the city, we'll be moving from those. So every at least every four years, we'll be reevaluating all of our contracts on a regular basis and deciding if it's a business decision, yes, let's go forward and we might test the market. And that could work against you sometimes where we're like, oh, we were getting a good rate, maybe we just keep it quiet. But we'll at least look at it. We don't necessarily have to go out a bit every four years, but I'm going to be we're implementing a whole system of of here's what we are. We look at something and at least we've looked at it. I don't, you know, it's it's like if you've been some ten years and you have no idea, is that competitive rate? And we don't really know, I don't I don't want to be in that position.
I don't think we have many of those.
We have a lot of standing contracts.
We have standing contracts, but they've been reviewed.
We're we're working to make sure that's the case.
Okay, yeah, I'm trying, I don't.
We're just we're we're working to sure.
I want to make sure we're going to review them, but I'm pretty confident that they've been reviewed because we've got we've do go.
I'm sure a lot of them are, we're just trying to document that they are and make sure that we have sort of the contracts themselves, some of them don't have ending dates and we just need to have that incorporated into the agreements.
Maybe, we'll have to vote on that.
Like for instance, I'll I'll be the the agreement we had with the the attorney that didn't have an ending date in it.
But he can be terminated at any time by by a member of council. So the ending date is moved.
Right.
But these do these.
But I think the point is when you have evergreen contracts, you typically don't look at them very often. And that that's the issue, they can go on and on and on forever and never look at them. If you have a termination date, you have to stop and take a look at them, like I said, maybe test the market, maybe you can get a better deal.
Yeah.
And again, I don't anticipate a lot of changes, but we're just going through a process. Because I think I want to be if you ask me, are we getting a good deal? I want to say, well, this is what the rate is and we looked at it two years ago and.
I just don't want to paint a picture of gloom because we have operated, the the city's been operating, looking at the contracts. It may not be a a written procedure, but we've looked at all the contracts. I just don't want the perception being that the city and the council and the staff have not looked at these contracts.
That's a good clarification, thank you.
That's what I mean by that.
Yeah.
Does does the A V portion support and so forth fall under the same I T contract?
No, no.
The what?
Audio visual.
Visual that we're getting right now.
Oh, no.
Okay, that's a different contractor?
That is a different contractor, correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Budget contingency is in there, it's five percent of operating expenditures. And that's a hundred and forty.
Can we back up to property tax admin fee?
Yeah.
You have an actual, you have a budgeted amount of nineteen thousand. But I'm looking at our actual, so back in twenty thirteen, we had nineteen thousand four hundred. But since then, we haven't been anywhere near this. So why do we have have it that high? I mean, it's probably, no, it's just formulated, but I'm just looking at the number.
Those are the estimates that we are that we are given from the county, so.
Okay, because it's never it hasn't been that high, I'm just wondering, seemed out of whack. I am on thirteen.
It's it's nineteen seventeen seventeen eighteen, okay.
Okay, so our actual seventeen, then our actual seventeen and last year.
Right, it would have been it would have been nineteen this year.
Okay.
But they like said, we had the one time settlement of $9,000, which reduced our cost. So knowing that, I was told that there is no reduction for next year. So I was budgeting based on the nineteen. Let's see, tuition reimbursement, again, that's something that we we didn't have an expenditure this year for it. But it's something that management believes is important to encourage staff to pursue further education. S M P costs.
Tuition reimbursement, where is that?
It's in. We're on the same page, page thirteen. Number nineteen footnote.
Okay, gotcha, that's fifty six twenty-five.
No, fifty eight oh one.
Fifty eight oh one, miscellaneous, yes.
Oh, miscellaneous, okay, but you said the tuition reimbursement was five thousand, so that's fifty six twenty-five.
I'm not sure what you're talking about fifty six twenty-five.
The general fund number fifty six twenty-five.
No, it's fifty eight oh one.
And then, oh, I see, I got you.
Okay, the the next part is our S M P. We have been our S M P is our senior mobility program. And we have done a we've done a lot of research on this. Our yellow cab or no, yeah, California yellow cab, we've worked a lot with them along with O C T A trying to find a fit of where our costs are in the sense of this program is for seniors to use as a taxi service and they pay a portion. And some of our seniors have made friends with our taxi drivers who they've been paying and not recording it with California yellow cab. So we've had reduced expenditures and we're trying to figure out why. And we were working with California yellow cab and we're working on letting the seniors know that if they choose to do this, then they're not going to be able to be part of the program. So it's we're just working through the kinks, you know, of a a program that's monitored with a joint agency. So we're hoping that next year we will have further compliance and we'll be able to use the and that money is again, it's a it's a grant or money that we've received from O C T A that funds it and it's twenty percent is absorbed by the city, which is just staff time. And that's in kind.
Question on that. Through the O C T A, California yellow cab and other companies, I'm assuming, have to register, be part of the program, go through some sort of vetting or background check. But Uber and Lyft would not.
You're thinking of the O C T A, which is different than the senior mobility.
I'm sure, yes, that's right.
O C T A is is basically, we just received some correspondence. O C T A is sort of not paying for itself, the administration of that because Uber and Lyft are regulated by different their public utilities regulations, which are different than the taxi companies. So the taxi companies have not responded well to that competition. So right now that O C T A has notified us as December thirty first of twenty seventeen, they'll no longer administer the O C T A program or unless it's funded. So all the cities, the cities have gotten together. Their proposal would be to continue funding it through June of twenty eighteen. And let's work up a long term solution because right now we don't want to go back to separate administration by city, which would be very difficult to do. For us to contribute for another six months would be about $300. So for us, it's in our best interest to let's I don't want to take on licensing and administering the taxis in Villa Park or having to go through that process. So so I want a longer term solution that works for maybe a different model. But that model has to incorporate Uber and Lyft and some of those types of things. So that's a really good point.
Thank you.
And the the cities are really concerned about that. Those particularly, they have like John Wayne Airport and that kind of thing that they'd have to deal with. So that's kind of a challenge for us. And and Anaheim with Disneyland, that's that's sort of the big ones for them. So you're right, you're right on that Uber and Lyft has sort of taken the 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 yellow of the yellow cab.
Yep.
And there's going to have to be some changes. Now, they are expecting some regulatory changes. What that means, I don't know, I I you know, what happens in Sacramento, we we won't know yet.
Thank you.
The the next we've discussed talking about doing our website overhaul, the question that you asked them. So we have money money budgeted aside for that. And then our insurance costs, our general liability went down this year based on the the assumptions that C J pig C J P I A gave us. However, next year, we know it'll go back up based on the settlement that we had. So it's just a nice little reduction for a one year that we can be grateful for. So those those equal the about a hundred and nine that that shows. And the budget contingency is obviously the big ticket item. That's the money that when the council has decided to set aside for the city manager upon a council discretion, you know, when something new comes up or the city manager with best practice interest can use that money to promote the the city and and take care of it and just go along there. Last year, we used one of the big items was for the additional streets that we did. It was, I think, a $60,000 contract. And the budget contingency, that was, I think, the big first use of that money. So there's here, things here and there that take care of that. So that's that's our support services variations. The next page is page fifteen. And here is our law enforcement division. And we are very fortunate to have a two point nine percent increase in our law enforcement contracted. It's not a lot, it's about $41,000. So that is reflected here. Our P S R program, we are putting about $5,000 aside for that to continue and improve just public safety within our city. And then lastly, there is the reduction, if you will, or not a savings, a reduced cost for next year. And the Cleet Fund.
We go back to twenty-three and the neighborhood watch program, that's not a city program.
No, but there's there's been opportunities when the city has set aside. In the past, city, we have budgeted for additional service. If it's benefiting the city and we can help and it's, you know, a public safety type of an issue, we that's where that money is. It's not like it's only for neighborhood watch, but if there's something that comes up, if they're going to do a they're going to do the.
Security fair.
Thank you, I'm all the night.
But we need to clarify that though, because we the neighborhood watch coordinators have specifically emailed and put in writing to us that they're not a city service because they don't want to be. And we've acknowledged that. So that's what caught my eye because they they have gone out of their way to make sure that they are not part of the city.
Right.
We either have to make up our mind if they're going to be, you know, part of it if we're spending money for something that is not part of the city. I know it's a play on words, but we need to be careful with it, that's all.
I think money was set.
Like the the neighborhood watch signs on the that are posted on streets where they have.
You know what, I did I've never made a purchase for that.
We've not made purchases.
No, but like for the the security night, the city fair, we.
Just a note, because it's been issue, it's been something that's been brought to council, that they've brought to council.
Right, but I'm saying that an expenditure for that scenario is for the a banner for.
Right, from zero to 5,000 is a big expense.
For the general benefit of the community, the security fair.
Forty-nine dollars for ban for to help advertise a security fair. But otherwise, I haven't authorized anything else. It's just, you know, something that would allow some minimal support, sort of a cosponsorship.
I just look at the 5,000, that we budgeted eleven the year before, we only spent 500 and now we're budgeting 5,000. It just seems like, you know, we're getting rid of an employee that we need because we don't have any staff and we're kind of adding money in a few places. So when we get all finished, we can kind of review what's going on there because we don't have any staff.
I would I would compliment too, and I I say this and I think we were, Michelle already said it, but we are very fortunate, our colleagues in other contract cities are not as happy with the sheriff's cost increases. We are extremely fortunate about the level of service we get and the quality with a two point nine percent when a countywide, I mean, when a Southern California Regional Cost of Living Index goes up two point seven five and they're coming to us with a two point nine, we are right in, I told I told Lieutenant Bucket that we're very fortunate. I know some of the other cities are in fact considering the option of even breaking away and do some of those things. So we are, we get a lot of bang for our buck and we are very fortunate. So I just wanted to go on record that we have some of the best law enforcement services in the in the county and we get it very minimal expense. And I think the sheriff does a lot of stuff for us that even goes off, you know, goes off unnoticed. But I think we do deserve a great deal of thanks to Lieutenant Bucket and his staff. We have one of the best crime crime rates in the in the county and that's.
Thank you.
I I don't want to let this opportunity pass without thanking him.
Good point. And lastly, on that page, for the reduction of costs from last year is we have bought the radios for the eight hundred C C C S megahertz next generation radios and whatnot. And so reducing our Cleet Fund. That is all we have for law enforcement. We can skip to public works on page nineteen. And the the main variation on that page is from our traffic striping. That is something that our city engineer is recommending and it hasn't been done in a couple of years. So we're setting aside that money for that in safety purposes as well. So that's about $17,000.
Do we have any idea what portion of the city would be covered by that seventeen thousand?
You know what, no, it was he just requested as much money as I could pull up for him. So I I don't know. So I, I don't know, you know, I, it was just in the beginning phases. So he was just like, please set some money aside for me, I need to, I, we need to restripe. So.
I agree.
I know the city schools committee has brought up not only striping but just painting red curbs, repainting them because they're fading or they're not even visible anymore. So some of those we have to go back and do, so we're looking at those and that was something that came up. Um, some of the residents brought up and said, hey, we got problems and people didn't know they could park or couldn't park or whatever. So in interest of safety and it's restriping curbs, a lot of things we need to.
I'm all for it. I've seen plenty of stop sign limit signs or limit lines, I should say, that are in need, as well as the body lines.
And even, even the, the bike lanes can be restripped and that, again, we can possibly use some of that AQMD money. So we've got, I mean, there's opportunities um for funding there too.
Thank you.
Um, street maintenance on page twenty-one. We, um, this in seventeen eighteen, um, based on council's direction, um, we are doing more um street repair or not repair, uh projects. Our, our street project is going from, we usually set aside about three hundred and three fifty, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and do a street project each year um per council. Seventeen eighteen was a year that was recommended to go up to seven hundred thousand dollars. So um, in this last year, in sixteen seventeen, we did a small um, you know, repair project of about thirty-seven thousand dollars of some streets, but we are doing the huge taff in sixteen seventeen. So um you'll see all of that in the capital because we're doing a large project and we're going to grind down and it's capitalizable and all of whatnot. That's where you're going to see these street um expenditures. And so next year, we, we don't have any set thing set aside because we're trying to use as much money as possible to do, to comply with what council um directed in the um, maybe in December of twenty fifteen? I don't, I don't remember when that was noted. But um, so that's, that's the variation here on page twenty-one.
Uh, Michelle?
Yes, sir.
Median repairs, we went down twenty thousand dollars. Is that something to do with capital funds too?
Um, yes, because we use um, we use general, or we use gas tax money, we use Measure M money and then um a- any other grants that we can get along, you know, for a street project and then the remaining portion is general fund. So um we were trying to get up to that seven hundred thousand dollar um amount per direction of council and um we were using more of the gas tax money, so we, we dropped down the median um repairs, um twenty thousand. But per, I mean, your call. I mean, you can, we can put it back, move it more back in there.
On the pavement maintenance, this is uh the thirty thousand dollar item that you referred to from last year, um, that was actually pavement repair where we're repairing uh areas where there was, you know, spot structural failures and so forth.
Sure.
And you're saying we're not going to uh correct any of those structural deficiencies?
Well, you know, we can. I mean, again, I was just going off the direction of council to put as much money as possible into the um street reconstruction, so that's what I did. If we.
It's council discretion.
You tell me, you tell me what you want. That's where the money was spent.
Yeah, I agree that we should, you know, uh do the pavement reconstruction uh too, but uh, you know, if we've got a little bit of extra money in our budget, it appears that we do, that we should put some money aside for just um repairing structural uh defects so that they don't grow and become, you know, ultimately result in a situation where you have to repave the whole street.
Is this like pothole maintenance and things like that?
Correct. That's exactly what it is.
Where you've got significant alligatoring or subsidence and that kind of stuff. And we've got a lot of situations like that around the city and can't repair them all, but we can.
Right.
We made a, a good dent in it last year and should keep the progress going.
That's entirely a decision of the council.
I, I'd suggest that we put in at least what we put in last year to uh.
Or should we take it out of the seven hundred thousand dollars though?
No.
Because now we're adding, we're going to be adding what, another thirty?
This is just a, this is not um repaving, this is just for repairs of uh, you know, specific defects.
Right.
Where you've got collapses and.
But it's, that's street maintenance, whether to repair or some.
I think we need the seven hundred and then some, so.
Now, we're looking at seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars going to the streets for the year.
Or seven forty.
But that's a lot of money.
Yeah, it is, but we've got a lot of needs that have to be addressed sooner or later.
They're not all streets, though. We have other needs that we're, that we're going through, so maybe we can get to the end and see what the other needs are.
Well, we've got, right now we've got, we're proposing nothing to, that we're not going to do any.
Oh, I think we need to do it, but I don't think we need to, we need to just look at, should we just take that seven hundred thousand dollars and reduce it by, by that forty thousand dollars? So let's see what else, what other needs that we have.
Let's see what else is left over.
Now, let's see what's left over at the end.
Well, I believe we have more than seven hundred thousand dollars.
Right, I was.
In our, in our street improvements in the capital budget, I think it's more like nine hundred and sixty-five dollars.
It is, and yeah, if.
But, but you, you do have to worry about, I, I don't recall, Michelle, how much you said, we had over revenues, over expenses in our budget to have a balanced budget?
One eighty-seven, I believe.
Hundred eighty-seven.
Only have a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars to deal with. You, you can only add so much, otherwise you're going to have an unbalanced budget.
Exactly.
On the, on the expenditure part. You've got to be careful when you add it. You don't have a lot of room to add a lot of stuff.
Correct.
Where the capital spending is not counted against the, the uh balanced budget.
Right. Okay, moving on. Are we ready now?
Yes. Thank you.
Um, page twenty-three is our storm drain maintenance. And um we just had a training with um John L. Hunter and um all staff, well, yeah, all staff was in there.
Mandatory MBDS training.
Right. Um, and upon the discussions of that, um, the city hasn't had any, from what I understand, and this is just my layman's terms, um, major uh ground uh movement in the sense of when you do remodel or whatnot, if you're not moving the ground, you don't need to do these compliance things. So um, we have, I think, two that are coming up for their first annual compliance requirement of a law that was a couple of years ago. You can correct me, I don't know. I'm talking my limited knowledge. And um from then on, every single year, they have to be um reviewed and checked and documented. So we are coming up on our first year of requiring that. Um, Chase Bank is one of them and um John L. Hunter is doing that review for us. Um, however, we've never had that additional compliance money that we've needed to be in um the, the budget. So um, we are increasing our um, our budget for them for about twenty, twenty thousand dollars and um, oh, no, 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 yeah, we're taking, sorry, we're reducing the twenty thousand for these, um, the master plan that we just completed. Um, and then we're increasing, I am talking about compliance, we are increasing it by um five thousand dollars for those compliances. Um, our building inspector also mentioned that we're going to have a couple more big builds in the city, so we're incre- we're assuming those as well. So that's what the increase for, um, that contract is for. Are there any questions? I know I probably went all overboard on that because it's really not my area. Understanding.
Is that ongoing?
It's.
Yeah, it's ongoing, it's an annual.
The, the five thousand will be, I mean, that's what we're anticipating.
Every project that adds, adds another mandated review every year of that project.
Yes.
And we don't uh um charge a fee to the property owner for the costs associated with their project?
That is, that is what we were discussing, yes.
One of the suggestions and one of the discussions we have, we don't at this point charge for it. It's a new mandate, so we can certainly evaluate that, but at this point, it's not something that's even factored in, didn't we've ever charged?
Right.
It's never been here. It's just now kicking in. So we're trying to address it and that was one of the things that came across in the training, that we realized that in, we've got to figure out where we're going with that. And we'll be coming to the council with recommendations. We just, sort of just hit us, the first thing was make sure we comply. That's A number one, we got to comply, don't want to not do it. And so we're having, you'll be seeing the John L. Hunter contract coming forward for the council in May.
I think so.
I think it's on May twenty-third.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the next step then, what do we want to do? Do we want to address that through, does the owner of that property end up having to pay on something along those lines? We, we could discuss that, but we're not assuming that at this point because we don't have authorization to charge.
And it's a five thousand dollar bucket of money. It, we're not.
It isn't, it isn't going to cost each one five thousand dollars.
No.
It's going to cost whatever it is, but we, it's new territory, so we don't know and they don't know exactly because they've got to submit their monitoring report, et cetera, and see how much it actually takes.
And that'll be on a bill-by-bill basis. So if you have, you know, three this year, then it's three times three hours or however long it is and that's what will be charged. The five thousand isn't going to, it's like not to exceed type. It's per hour um usage. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, we are on to.
Civic Center.
Civic Center, thank you.
No, I'm sorry, you're on Storm Rain.
Storm Rain.
Or it is what, whichever.
Twenty-three.
Yes, that, that's what we were discussing, yeah. And the, and the Storm Rain Master Plan we completed this year. So that's where you see the reduction and then um, I was just talking about the compliance because that was kind of a new thing that we just learned, not learned about, I just learned about, or kind of got a better understanding of. Um, next, we'll go to the Civic Center, page twenty-seven. And this is due to a myriad of.
I'm just going back to Storm Rain Maintenance.
Sure.
Were there, are there any recommendations that we're aware of from the consultant yet about uh repairs that are needed or other storm drain maintenance? Based on your studies?
We, we have not received anything further from the report with the workshop we did two weeks ago. At this point, we haven't received, I know, um, there'll be some additional meetings that are scheduled, but uh we just haven't had anything input from this point.
Okay.
So uh page twenty-seven, um, we are talking about building maintenance, chamber maintenance, um, and some equipment. Um, these are expenditures that occurred in sixteen seventeen that we will not be having in um seventeen eighteen. And um it was, we upgraded the carpet, we did painting, we had our AC breakdown, it was the year of repairs. Um, we have improved the council chambers and we have the tables, we have the podium, we have chairs, we have, you name it. There was a lot of um expenditures in sixteen seventeen that we are definitely not anticipating for seventeen eighteen as their like longevity. Um, so there is a assumed cost reduction of um approximately netted together, um, twenty thousand dollars. So that is the Civic Center.
Question, where's the tools for Mike and?
Public Works.
I'm sorry?
Those are in the Public Works back on page forty, or nineteen.
Okay.
Okay. On the uh maintenance and operations, that, I guess that includes the maintenance of the, this room here?
Maintenance and operations? Oh, yes, yes, sorry, yes.
Okay. So we charge fees for use of this room.
Right.
And the idea is that this, that's to help.
Yes.
Reverses for the wear and tear.
Right.
Do you have a separate account where we keep that money and then?
Yes, is it a deposit and it reduces? Yes.
Okay, so we use that money for.
Yes.
Improvements and maintenance?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's something I think that last year we were, we had discussed looking at, which we haven't taken on yet because um the majority of the wear and tear that, that comes out of here is because of our, the rentals and twenty-five dollars doesn't cover it when you have sixty people for lunch every Wednesday, every, and then on Thursday you have another sixty people for breakfast and so on. The carpet with um, with AA renting, you know.
Every day.
Only a hundred dollars a month. Um, the carpet gets replaced, it got replaced twice last year if I'm not correctly, didn't it? Or it got cleaned a lot because.
Cleaned.
The majority of the damage is done from, from them, so it was something I know that we didn't look at. Certainly doesn't cover the wear and tear in any shape, wear or form, so uh maybe, I'm not too comfortable with this. I know we haven't finished with the council chamber because we know that.
We're doing some work.
Our back wall over there is, is, is kind of hanging on a shoestring. If you push it too hard, it might come off. Um, so I know there's not much in here, but it might be augmented by the fees being, you know, raised. I know we were not charging a lot of nonprofits coming in here either, so I think that that's something that we have to look at. That's in a separate account, that is not in here, right? You don't offset it, the money that's received?
No, that, that's what the money is for, but it's offset.
But it's dedicated for, it's dedicated and incorporated back in, to channel back in.
But is that a separate revenue item?
It's a deposit because what we do is we have a chamber trust deposit and we pull money out of that. That is, we, every month, we're pulling money out for the cleaning, for like the carpet, we do the carpet cleaning and other repairs and whatnot.
But it's not a significant amount of money. I think that's what, like the.
Yeah.
What are the fees for the room?
It depends, but it's, it's like ten dollars or it's twenty-five dollars a meeting um for cleaning.
It pays a hundred dollars a month.
Right.
Okay, and they're in here from.
Every single day.
They're in here every single day from.
A hundred dollars a month?
A hundred dollars a month and they're here, they're here from five-thirty till nine o'clock and, and, and I, I certainly appreciate the service and that we could provide and if we had it, but the bulk of the dirt and the cleaning is, it gets used, it gets used more than we use it.
Well, we probably need to look at that feature.
So, yeah, and so I do look at this and I see that we, you know, the Women's League was fortunate to, they gave us money for chairs, but we had to buy new tables and, you know, that, the plants that are over here have been here, I think, twelve years. So, you know, we might want to look at that because we do have a lot of meetings and our public comes in here, so.
Some of the wearing.
Just something that came up last year.
Some of the wear and tear has, we, we've started talking to some of the nonprofits that have use of the cabinet space and things and we, we sort of want to clean up and get some of this stuff brought up and, you know, the cabinet doors, some of them, literally the hinges don't even work. You can just pull them off without, but without using a key. So we're trying to clean those up and fix those a little better so that, and labeled for who, what group, I mean, who even has keys and things, we're trying to get things. So we'll be working on that, so that's sort of a, a work in effort.
It is, well, we had the sheriff come in here, what, two weeks ago and um Anika gave, you know, she gave, tried to give a presentation to our residents regarding security. I mean, we couldn't get the, we couldn't get the, whatever that box is up there to work. Even Pam was here and she's in Rotary and she couldn't figure it out, so the poor girl had to do it, you know, she had, was holding her notebook up. So we do need a little bit of money to still come in here because we don't have the technology to just come in here and, and put on seminars. That is something that I think that all of us up here like to do.
You had the stick, Greg uses a stick.
We had the stick and the stick didn't work, so I'm just going to bring that up. It's, this is all we have to be able to teach our residents.
Okay, sorry, I'm taking it up.
So I won't get to the end if you have any left.
Okay. Uh, the sewer improvement, that's where we're at now, page twenty-nine. And um, this is, we have a slight decrease, well, not slight, but somewhat of a decrease, um, about six thousand dollars, um, sixteen thousand, I'm getting tired. Um, because we do a sewer cleaning, um, in the past, how we've done the sewer cleaning is we do half the city one year and we do the other half the other year. Two years, last fiscal year, we did not do it knowing that um we were going to do the full city. We did the majority of the city this year and we are going to do another um cleaning. Um, Mike and the contractor spoke and they said they should do another, like maybe three quarters, um, and look at some of the um more uh problem areas. And um, so there, there's a, there's a reduction there um of uh sixteen thousand and that's just because the full city was done in seventeen, sixteen seventeen. And next we have, um, on page thirty-three is our planning and engineering and this is going to be coming up at our um council meeting.
May twenty-third.
May twenty-third. Um, our current contractor um came in six years ago, I would want to say, and at the time, um, they came in at a very low rate um as a planning contractor and it's been And it's been bought out by, Lily Planning has been bought out by another firm. And they are requesting to get paid closer to prevailing wage of their contractors. And it's a significant increase for the same amount of hours. So, we will be bringing that to your attention. However, we built in what they're requesting, just as an FYI. It's, it's significant. It's between just the twelve hours a week, what we're currently paying. And then we have an additional $5,000 for meet committee meetings or special projects, you know, whatever zoning council would like to, for them to pursue.
We've had it good.
We.
We've had it good with them. So, it finally caught up to us.
I think also because when Lily Planning came in, it was the owner who was trying to get business and got it and didn't mind working here for a very low rate. And now the new owners aren't so fond of that.
Are we planning on putting out an RFP and a bid and all that good stuff?
Yeah, one of the things we've, we've sort of toyed with, and I've sort of informally talked, the rate we're getting is, I want to be careful and put out, not put out an RFP that's going to cost us money in the long run, or a lot more money. So, I've been talking to some of my counterparts in other cities to see where we stand, to see where. And right now, I wouldn't recommend going out for an RFP, because we could be going beyond this $30,000 as a rate increase. So, I'm kind of viewing this as sort of a negotiation, maybe for a year or so, or a year or two. We set a rate in and lock it in, and we work with them. But I can tell you, prevailing rate out there is, is a lot higher than even was being proposed, and I've done that, so.
It doesn't keep them, I mean, they can still come back with the same rate.
Yeah, but if they don't, then we're stuck paying the higher rate. That's my fear. And then we've lost in the deal. So I want to be careful, and I want to work with them, but I also want to make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck. And right now, we're getting, like Councilwoman said, we've, we've been getting a good deal for, up to this point. Now, how long that continues, because they want to show increases, and they're going to price themselves out of the market at some point. I'm going to, okay, fine. If you want to go there, we're going to go out. That's why I want it to be a very limited term with them. So like, maybe it's a year to year. We go out and say, okay, if, let's see what it looks like, and, you know, or two years or whatever on agreement. So if I can lock them into it two years, it's still a savings, from what I'm seeing as prevailing rates out there. And then that's what I'll, I'll recommend to the council. And again, you certainly could say, hey, well, let's go out to bid or do whatever, but I, I would, I would caution that it could be more expensive.
And I think what we found is, you know, we're a small city, and a lot of people hate to say, you know, don't want to bid.
Right.
They don't want to bid. And we have run, not, we're not, I mean, we still have to go ask, but we have run into that, where we've gone out to RFPs and nobody, nobody submits it.
So I think what we do, I think what we do is we go ask and look and see. I don't think, that's, this is one of those things we talked about earlier with contracts. We need to look at them and monitor them and say, hey, where do we stand on this? But let's not, I don't want a hard and fast rule if we go out to bid and then say, well, gosh, well, we thought it was going to be a $30,000 increase that they were willing to negotiate. Now we're paying $50,000, so we lost $20,000 because I went out to bid. I don't want to end up on that end of the equation. So I'm, right now, that's where I think we land. With a increase over the next two years, I don't think we'll be in that spot. Maybe we'll be a more competitive bidding process that we might attract something, so.
I think that it's a lesson here, because we were very conservative in how we use some of our consultants for the fee that they were charging us. And we really have overused them for the fee they were, what they were charging us for. And in the past, the council credit was an unspoken, knowing that we had it at a low rate.
We are, to give you sort of a frame of reference.
It got carried away, and now, now we have to bite the bullet, is what's happened to it.
We're paying for basically a planner that would walk out of college right now is the rate we're paying.
The rate we're paying, yeah.
And so, we're like a planning, you know, I mean, basically, no experience, that's the rate they're being charged. Now, we don't have that level of service. Ray is, is a much more experienced level, and he would be a much more costly. So that's sort of like what we've got to keep in mind, and I think that's sort of.
That's coming to council though, and May?
The council of the contract, and that's a discussion item.
And are there, are we billed for things over and above what you have budgeted here on a time and material basis from these guys?
Well, in the past, not so much.
But can we be safe? In their contract, they can, they can be billed if, if the time has been excessive, and the time in the last year has been extremely excessive.
Right.
Because I reviewed the contract last week and looking at it, and it's been.
Right, and I believe, oh, no, no.
I didn't know this was coming when I reviewed it. I just reviewed it to get myself updated.
But.
Thank you.
That's huge.
Okay.
That's huge.
Okay.
Okay, oh, I should be on the next slide, sorry. Engineering is on page thirty-five. And every five years, we have to do a traffic engineering study. We are doing one toward the end of this year. So, we will not be seeing that $7,000 expenditure in seventeen eighteen, so there's reduced costs there. And then, for the city manager's contract service versus salary, so that that will be in net. But that's about $10,000 total. So, as Steve has mentioned, we, we have looked at ways that we can reduce spending and maybe get economies of scale. Hence why we're doing, as Mayor Nelson mentioned, that our street projects, which I'm going to next, is not 700. It's like 938, or I believe, somewhere close to that. Because we didn't do, we didn't do a street project this year, because we had Taft as our main, like, big construction project. So, the expenditures that we were going to use in this year's smaller fix got lumped into next year, increasing it to a $900,000-ish number for economies of scale. So, those are kind of things that staff has tried to see where we can make our money go further. So, having said that, we are on to capital. This would be page forty in your budget. And we, to kind of just show you what we have budgeted in seventeen eighteen, final costs for our software conversion. There were some minor changes that we'll be making, or finishing costs in seventeen eighteen. Total project cost is $18,300, and these are all funded by the general fund. And the total project cost is, can straddle more than one year, just as an FYI, that's what that number's for. Street improvement projects, here we go, here's the 965. This is to do a major street project. $700,000 was the goal for seventeen eighteen, based on council direction. However, we did not spend $265,000 of our money in sixteen seventeen. So we have put it into the budget for seventeen eighteen for a economy scale, make, you know, take care of that. $250,000 is coming from gas tax, which is, I guess, Councilmember Pitts, I believe you were the one that asked me why medians reduced? Because we wanted to make sure we got up to the $700,000 originally, and then that's where we assumed that the money would be spent, because it was a priority. Direction is, you know, that's what we're here for, for direction. And then again, same with Mezzanine, that, that money is used for street projects. So, $176,000 for there. The next area is Storm Drain Improvement Projects. Obviously, we were getting the Storm Drain Master Plan this year. This is for discussion, where we're going with this. We didn't spend the 150 that we had this year. We were expecting, wanting to do another 150. I know it's a small dollar amount. But again, room for discussion for, that'll be coming from the general fund as well. About $300,000 is what we have to date. The catch basin improvements, this is based on direction from council, allowing our city engineer going out to get the remaining catch basins for the city, for the rest of the drains. And that would be funded by OCTA, $200,000, but the general fund has $40,000 that is their responsibility.
Can you repeat that?
Forty thousand is the general fund's responsibility. In the past, what they said is if you spend $200,000, you could do in-kind maintenance. Now they're saying cash upfront, 20%. So that's where the 40,000, and that will be funded by the general fund. If we get that grant. That's, that's only if we get that grant. Next page is the Wanda Green Belt. Drought Tolerant Landscaping, this is, again, the, the topic for council direction. It has been on our capital improvement plan, trying to figure out what we're going to do there. Council's direction is going to be needed for that, but $50,000 for the general fund. The next is the Storm Drain Collapse. And this is due to the storms on January 21st on Henderson. $684,000 is to be pulled from the capital project fund. And the remaining portion will be from the general fund. So a total of $730,000 is anticipated in the capital project.
And I will mention that on the next meeting, based on our meeting with FEMA, they want us to go out to bid. We candidly can't even go to Public Works without going out to bid. So we can't go to county without bidding out. FEMA is very, very specific about that. So we'll be putting a bid, coming to the council on the 23rd, requesting authority to move forward on the bid process. That's our next step, the RFP. So, we're moving forward on it. FEMA's blessed it, said, yes, that's your next step. Let's get started. So, that's going to be on your May 23rd council agenda.
Is that design?
Huh?
Is that design?
That would be the first element of it. They want it specifically, that's another issue. FEMA has been adamant, it is like-for-like repair. In other words, if we have corrugated metal, they won't pay a penny over what corrugated metal would have cost to replace. If we put cement in there, they're not paying, it's up to us. They will only pay up to the corrugate. So we have to give them an estimate of like-for-like. If we decide to go an alternate route, which is one of the things that's been played with and discussing with some of it, meaning there's maybe options about how to do this repair. They would consider that an improvement and would not pay any more than the cost of corrugated metal. They've been very specific with that. FEMA is like-for-like, except if they view mitigation as something that they view as a significant mitigation that could, now, we've made that argument with them, they're not, they're not going for it.
They're not going for it in the movement of the, if we went like out into the street, like, that was one of the ideas talked about. They were saying, but if we did possibly, they'll say we did the cement, and it would make the, in the same path.
Right.
And it would, it would.
Enhance or mitigate.
It would enhance and mitigate future repairs.
They have not guaranteed us.
They don't guarantee it, exactly.
They would discuss that with us. The risk, they said, they clearly said, the risk is, you may end up paying for it, if you go to that. So just beware. So that's one of the things that we're going to advise you of, and, you know, we want to go out to bid. We need to see what the cost differential is and what some of the ideas are. But we need to get started, because FEMA is also very adamant that you got 18 months. That's their process. You have to ask for any extension after 18 months. Well, that's, that's work completed. That's not bidded or whatever. And the bid processing may require everything to go out to bid. If I were to go right now and say, I have a contract with OC Public Works to do this, they'd say, you're not eligible for reimbursement. Go look, have fun. But they won't reimburse you. They want everything bided out contractually competitively, so.
And one of the, one of the caveats that we've discussed about putting in the RFP is that they are in compliance, whatever RFP comes back and, you know, alternative routes or whatnot, what they decide to best plan, is that it needs to be in compliance, and we'll give them with the county flood control.
Where county flood control standards would be, so we can give them standards and say, they have to live to flood control standards in the, in the, in the replacement. But we can't contract right away with, with Public Works. It's just, like I say, FEMA is very particular about this.
In our bid documents, we can identify the county requirements.
Yeah, the standards.
That's what our RFP is going to.
That's.
Ultimately dedicate that and.
That, that is some, we told them that we would want to do that, but, but if the standards are in excess of like-for-like, we may end up having to pay.
Yes.
So they're, they're pretty clear about that. Some of the, you know, they always come back to that, well, you know, corrugated metal is corrugated metal, and you have to show us that it isn't, you know, meeting.
Corrugated metal will collapse again in another few decades, and it'll be right back there again. So, it's, I guess it's a matter of looking at.
We'll look at some options.
What will the cost of the insurance be to basically put in, let's say, to build the county standards and wash our hands of that facility?
I think that's what we want to go out, that's what we're asking for authority in the RFP to sort of tell us what the basic is, because that's the baseline. We all know the baseline, and then what the delta would be to get to.
You're fine.
There we go.
It just went to sleep.
She was, yes.
I'm not techie.
She panicked here earlier this evening, but, but you're right, but that's sort of the option. We'll have to look at some of this. So the, the RFP is going to have to be a little bit descriptive and allow permissive language to get us to where we want to get, I think. But, but again, one of the things I mentioned to her, there may be an incentive to meet county standards if they'll take it. And that further maintenance off our hands type of road, if the county will take it, and we can pay maybe, I don't know what the number would be, in hypothetically, X amount of dollars. That delta, it might be worth investing that delta, so that we don't have that responsibility for future decades.
Yeah.
So that's sort of one of the things I mentioned, and they were like, they're, they're very receptive to that, but that delta would be our responsibility.
Yeah.
So it's sort of a business decision we'll have to make. You're right.
Next is the part of the storm that was a declaration of a federal emergency, was January 18th through the 23rd. And we had some additional damage of some trees falling on some residents' gates and whatnot. And then we had our trails, all the DG was gone. So, so here is another reimbursable expenditure capital project that we can do is for the trails. And it's about $180,000 of reimbursement there, that obviously we have a little bit portion, 6% that the city's got to, the general fund will have to absorb. So that's what we have.
But they are very interesting. They want to know volume of how much was, how much was.
That's Barry.
How many tons, and where, where it went, and was it licensed, and, you know, et cetera. So it's, it's a process. And, you know, but, but they, they were very happy with our documentation to this point, so we owe a lot to you.
Yes, Barry's the man. Okay, and then AKMD, I discussed earlier, we had bus stops. That was like the first forefront that we were going from. This was prior to all of the fund that we started discovering under, after the storms. But I think predominantly, what we were going to look for first is if we can offset the general fund's cost of the storm damage. So DG is probably our first priority, so the bus stop here, we can just know that that's not our first priority. If we can do traffic striping for the bike lanes, again, that's where this money will be used. So, right now, we're just saying, we have $55,000 of AKMD money. We're going to use it to offset anything we can for the city's best interest.
It's a placeholder at $55,000.
Yeah, I think, that's a great amount of money, quite frankly, that we need, you know, we need to move forward and looking into, into the bike lanes and making it so that people can get out of their cars and walk to the town center and to walk to school, and to make it safe. It's, you know, we're, we're so behind on people being able to walk down Villa Park Road or walk down Santiago to get to this town center that that money could come in handy to increase those bike lanes and strike them and have people ride their bikes, because they want to. We want to keep people here with their families, so.
Have we looked into the dedicated green bike lanes that other cities are putting in? Have you seen those?
The dedicated what?
Yeah, San Ana has those.
Yeah, there's.
Have you driven in San Ana?
Uh, yes.
Oh, they're lovely.
I can't find which is the traffic lane and which is, you make a right turn and I don't.
Those go lanes are awesome. I, I think they're great.
Pasadena has them too. I was just in Pasadena this past weekend.
I don't.
I think it's done through a grant. I didn't know.
Yeah, they're, they're green. They're actually green. They're bright green, and they're isolated, and it's part of the street.
I don't know if they have them too.
Yeah, the, the, Sky puts a lot of money into those. We don't have that much space, but that could be, that's something that needs to be included here.
Hi, how are you?
I don't know how much was spent and what that will get us, but it's.
Something I saw and asked questions and whatever we can do to improve the city within our means.
Right. Okay, having said that, we're getting close. Thanks for being with me. Here is a, kind of an overview of our fund balances by fund, based on what we have budgeted to date in this draft that I've given you. We are looking at a estimated general fund balance of $2,468,000 and change. And that is inclusive of our reserves, and so I'll break out the reserves to show you kind of where we're at. But this gives us our total revenues that you see for every single fund. On the second column is $5,700,000. That is what we're anticipating for the seventeen eighteen, the budget before you. Total budgeted expenditures operating of the general fund and the other funds is 3.5 million. And then our capital expenditures next year, obviously, the FEMA, the Storm Drain is like the big, why we're at 2.7 million for that. But all in all, showing our fund balances, as you see, I will be working on our CLEAK to eliminate that one. We always try and spend down our special revenue funds when we get the money as soon as possible. AKMD fund has been one that we have set aside. The projects that have set, been, set up have not been. The projects that have set, been, set up have not been available in the sense of the dollar amount that we had. Now, we have a good pool of money that we can use and do a, a good project for the city. So, these are our, our fund balances summary. Next, I will talk about our designations. Now, these are council designations and in our budget, we specify limits of where we want to set money aside for future, just kind of setting aside, it's setting aside money for things you know you're going to spend in the next year or two. So, we don't spend down our available fund balance to a spot where we're like, oh, great, truck broke, now we got to get a truck. So, every year, we put a five thousand dollars aside in four, four years, we'll have enough to buy another vehicle, which is about the life of the vehicles, our maintenance vehicles. So, we, vehicle maintenance is ten thousand. Infrastructure replacement, we have, this was a money that was set aside to a hundred and forty thousand for any infrastructure issues that come up. And this can, this is, can be polled at any time during the year by a majority vote. So, three council members can poll this hundred and forty thousand, say, use it for this purpose. Any of these costs can be, so a hundred and forty thousand is set aside and I believe that's our max for infrastructure. VPTV capital, that is the PEG money that we receive from the spectrum.
You just renewed that, you just renewed that about last month, I believe, or two months ago.
Right, and that's for, to be used for capital for TV viewers, whether it's the equipment in here or whether it's the servers in the back that do all the magic, they get it out to the viewers.
So, you can use it to make it a smart room, so people can use it.
It has to be equipment, yes.
Yeah, but that's equipment.
Yes, yes, that can be used. Accrued leave, we set this money aside in case everybody left on the same day. This is what we are anticipating. The PTO, based on the salary resolution, will be paid out, fifty-three thousand there. And the CJPI retro deposit repayment, that is the dollar amount that four years ago, I believe CJPI redid their structure of being, of billing cities and we're, we're paying off the past, the past program that they had. So, it, that, I think we have two more years of this payment. And the, the thing that's funny about this is they re, redo our amount every single year and three of the last four years, we haven't had paid.
Go back to the fifty-three thousand for the accrued leave, because how, you didn't change this number from last year, this fifty, have you?
Yes.
You have changed it, I'm asking, what was it?
Yes, I.
My budget's here, but it's easier, do you know what that was last year?
Hold that thought.
Okay.
Probably more people, so it may be higher.
It was seventy-five thousand.
So, last year was seventy-five, now it's fifty-three.
Be, because our city manager who's been here for, was here for eight, ten years or whatnot, that was his, part of his payout, okay. So, um, capital improvement, we are at capital improvement. We have in our budget document that we can put up to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars and that is what we are at this year. Again, that can be pulled out for any use, capital improvement wise. Sewer pump, we set aside money every year just in case the pump breaks. We can, that, that's the basic of repair of, or replacement of a pump. We set that money aside within the assessment district fund, so that's fifteen thousand dollars. And in our sewer improvement fund, every seven years, we do a, a sewer improvement master plan and sewer improvement CCTV through all of the pipes and all that fun stuff. So, what we have done to make sure we fiscally set that money aside is every, every year, we put a seventh of that money aside in our designation. So, by year seven, no issues, we have that money set aside, we pay for what we need to pay for. So, of all of our designations, general fund, we have four hundred and forty-three thousand set aside, assessment district fund fifteen thousand and city sewer improvement fund is two hundred and twelve, giving us a total of six hundred and seventy thousand dollars set aside for designated reserves. Three force, or three fifths of the council can release any of that within the year.
Simple majority.
Thank you, yes. Now, for the general fund reserve. Now, this is the, we have a general fund reserve policy, resolution twenty sixteen three three six two, it's governing it still, there's no changes to date to change that resolution. However, it's available to be changed, but it states that our reserve goal is to achieve fifty percent of our general fund operating expenditures. And as of this draft, the minimum requirement is to do the interest calculated in May and this number will change a little bit just because it was an April number, so just, it's ballpark-ish, twenty thousand dollars. Okay, so that's the minimum that we are going to increase our reserve based on this policy. However, that brings us to forty-nine percent of our general fund operating expenditures. If we want to hit that goal for fifty thousand, or fifty percent. We would additionally increase the generals, fund reserve from what we have today by another forty-one thousand dollars, so a total of sixty, sixty-two thousand two hundred. And that would be fifty, that would equal fifty percent of our general fund operating expenditures. And this is, you know, council's discretion, how you want to do it, but the minimum we've said, we've already set aside in the budget you have before you is a twenty thousand, so.
And if we wanted to increase it from sixty-two thousand, say, to ninety thousand, we would have to change, we would have to have a resolution change, correct?
You would have to change the resolution because right now governing, I believe in one of the sections.
I'm looking at one, section C?
C, right, okay, it says, in any fiscal year, when undesignated reserve equal or exceed fifty percent of the budgeted general fund operating expenditures, the reserve amount shall not be increased pursuant to section one A above, which gives us the minimum. So, it, it limits you to fifty percent of general fund operating expenditures.
So, but that, that resolution is.
Yeah, council discretion.
No, 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 I understand. My, my thoughts here are to bring to council, they're just thoughts of changing this resolution, allowing us to go to sixty percent, but would have to be by a separate vote, but allowing us the opportunity to have the council look at it, not by right, that it would go to, instead of fifty percent, go to sixty percent, but giving us the, we would have to meet and vote on it rather than having that number just be there. Just, I'm not comfortable, and I know we did this last year, that we capped ourselves at the fifty percent to do that, because we, we have the funds. It'd be good to put in more than, first, more than twenty, because I think that's ridiculous, and a little bit more than sixty-two. I mean, it'd be good to put in another ninety, but to do that, we have to change the resolution. Those are my thoughts on this, to bring to council, so we have, we have that ability to do it.
But you may recall, we changed that from forty percent to fifty percent.
I do, yeah, I, I do.
We've already increased it a significant amount already.
Yeah, and I don't want to do it by right, like I say, I don't want, I don't want to put the sixty percent there, but I think that I'd like it to be able, that we could come back to make a decision between the fifty and the sixty percent and see what the dollar amount is, rather than just capping it.
We, we could make, we could come back with language as part of the budget process that would allow it to be permissive with council approval, any given year, up to a certain level.
Within the budget.
Yeah, within the budget.
Within the budget process.
Yeah, I, I don't want it by right that it could go up there.
It must be with council approval, but we can make it permissive, so you don't have to change a resolution every year if you want to do that. We can come back with language that would allow that, but I don't.
I'd like that, just so we could take a look at it and see what it's like, I mean, all the council could take a look at it.
I would be opposed to changing it, because I'm always opposed to putting so much money into two reserves, where it takes four fives to get it out. And I'm aware, know you well aware of that.
I know that, I know that.
But, but what I wanted to know was, Michelle, on the general fund.
Yes.
At the amount of general funds you have at the end of this budget, and then you take out this fifty percent of reserves and the designations, then how much money in general funds do we have left?
We have four hundred and.
Ninety-two thousand.
Ninety-two thousand.
Forty-nine-two thousand?
Yes.
Really? That's about what we had last year, wasn't it?
Yes, I don't like to go much longer.
We, we spent a lot more money in capital this year, though, how, how does that happen? Do we still have money left?
Well, I mean, okay, so in relation to this fiscal year, we had three hundred thousand dollars that we didn't spend in streets. So, we're pushing it into next year, but.
On the, the budget last year, we had like about four hundred and some thousand dollars left at the end of the budget period. And we have so much more spending in capital this year, how can we still have that much left?
It's, it's a, it's a flux of some additional revenue and also some reduced expenditures. Like, like I said, I mean, three hundred thousand right there is moved into that fiscal year, into the next fiscal year, so you're going to see, your remaining fund balance in sixteen seventy is going to be huge.
More like seven hundred thousand, what you say, the three hundred thousand there.
Right, but then you're having, like you said, more capital expenditures this year that you're using.
I had a question on capital expenditures. You had something there for storm drain repairs. I didn't really understand, when the guy made the presentation, he talked about, most of the repairs were really the county repairs, the major ones. But he said it was some repairs that we should do would be the eastern part, we should at least do that.
Well, that's one of the things we're talking to and I think that's what the mayor pro tem res, we got recommendations and we're sort of pushing the consultant to give us some recommendations about how much that would be.
By how much that would be, would three hundred thousand cover that?
We're, we're trying to work to get an estimate and that's still a work in process, but, but that's one, you're right, that's one of the things that we could very well, with council discretion, move forward on.
You need to know that, if you, what three hundred thousand cover that up.
Right.
Should we, should we do anything, given that the major part of it is county?
Well, we need to push them a little bit to come back with.
Big timers.
Yeah, I thought it was going to give us the number on what it was for the eastern part, but he said we should at least do that. Because I suppose that would stop some current flooding in Bell Park, is that right?
Yeah. Attention please. And also the weird, you know, one of the options we're going to be talking about tomorrow is, you know, maybe dividing some of the flow coming down center and sending it over to that pretty much unused storm channel on the south side of Sierra Villa.
Is there, what's going on tomorrow?
And I'm just meeting with the consultant, he wanted to discuss some, what I was trying to describe to him at the meeting a couple of weeks ago.
Is Aqua meeting with them also?
Yes.
And, you know, even if, even if it's a county project, at least if we can get something that's maybe a little more cost-effective out there for the county to be looking at and somewhat of a shovel-ready project, we know the economy's going to go up and down and there may be an opportunity in the future for another, you know, federal grant project.
Other question I had is, is the council comfortable with the current level of capital spending? Because you have a, you have nine hundred and sixty-five thousand in there on street improvements for the current year, right? And you, you have nine hundred and thirty-three thousand in general fund expenditures, because many of the street repairs are covered by gas tech fund, major M funds.
Right, right, only five hundred and thirty-eight.
Five hundred and thirty-eight thousand is, is a general fund.
General fund.
We had a consultant make some recommendations not too long ago. Correct me if I'm wrong, it was a million dollar threshold, right? Minimum?
I think, it was a million for one projection and then that's where council said, okay, minimally, we want to, we want to shoot for seven hundred thousand, starting in seventeen, eighteen.
But there were holes in his projection, I mean, when he came back the second time around when we, when we discussed it, I mean, I, I thought his numbers were, his million-dollar numbers were not justified when he came in. Are you referring to, should, do you want to spend less money or more money when you said, are we comfortable?
I just wonder, are they comfortable with the number?
I think the number's high, I think that that's a significant dollar amount for the city of Villa Park to spend in one year, not just, not just money-wise, but there's only so many projects the city can take on in a short period of time, because we don't, first of all, we're small, second, we don't have the staff to monitor it either. So, there are other, I think, considerations.
I had the same concern, do we have the staff to do that much?
Yeah.
Two point seven million dollars in capital spending, do we really have the staff to do that?
I don't think we do, and that's a concern, not that they don't need to get done, but we can't, we can't monitor it, we can't, you know, look at what we have. And you can't fix the whole house in one year. And that is a concern.
We've got to prioritize what we're doing.
Yeah, we've got TAF that's supposed to be starting in less than a month.
They did open the bids, so you will be receiving the contract on May 23rd. And we had seven bids, and so.
Now, we'd be doing the construction inspection on that, or will be the county, will the county be doing that?
We'll be working with the county and.
But the county will be just taking the oversight.
And we have that, we've got staff certainly spending a tremendous amount of time with FEMA, which is a big, bigger deal, because that's, you know, a million dollars to us. And then the work has to get done. So, then on top of that to do, it's just, it's just, it's a concern.
Candidly, FEMA is, is one of our highest priorities because of their timeframe and if we don't hit their timeframe, we lose the money and that's sort of an issue. So, that's, that's priority one and that's candidly where we've been focusing a lot of our energies and the TAF project as well. Again, we'll be coming forward on that contract on TAF to May 23rd, so that's moving, we'll be recommending going out to bid on the, on May 23rd as well.
Which time-wise, that's important, because we need to start as soon as schools ending, because of traffic issue.
We're trying to get up with completion by the end of August was the goal there, so.
School starts the sixteenth.
I don't know if there was another staff meeting on this, but on the September 27th, twenty sixteen meeting, that it was, council had requested staff to come back with a proposal for, to complete the two-year projects for street, the pavement management plan, like kind of in response to council's question, that it would double, it would be one point four million every two years. And that was to bring the PCI rating up to the recommended, or the minimally recommended amount for the PMP. So, that's the, that, that's the basis that I was using on budgeting. So, I don't know if there was further information given, but this is, this is where the information that I was going from. Okay.
So, we kind of want to, I mean, I guess the, the reserve issue is sort of open and I guess for, we need some direction or help.
Well, I mean, I, we have one more, we at least have one more session, this has only been a, typically a three.
I just like food for thought.
Now, I mean, I've, this is a, I've looked at this and now that I've got a little bit more information, I certainly need to go back and kind of regurgitate a little bit more with what you have. I would like to see some language to add some more money to reserves. I am concerned, not with it so much just a dollar amount, but I am concerned that just because we have the money, doesn't mean we can do the work. So, I don't know how to tackle that problem and how to do all the capital that we need to, but I don't think that we can do everything that we're trying to bite off. And it's not just a money issue, it's also a staff issue, it's a time issue. How, how do we handle that? Do we put that in designated reserves so that we don't spend it? Yeah, you know, I mean, that's a, that's a question I have, you know, do we leave it in the general fund? Do we scale down the projects? I mean, I'm looking at our workshop from last year, which was in February, trying to ascertain if we even accomplished what we put together last February. I don't think we've accomplished everything that we wanted to and that's because we've bid off more than we can shoot. So, I'd like to see something coming back, showing us how this is, if we're going to continue with this capital improvement, how is it going to get accomplished?
And what staff, what staff is needed and what.
Yeah, it's not just budget. I'm a little worried with Lily Planning, that's something that was new, that's going to be thrown out, that I didn't know about and none of us did. But that's, that'll be a big deal, I mean, we run a tight machine here and they've been here a long time and they have given us a lot of resources, so not to have, you know, we've got another sixty thousand dollars and if we have to go out to bid to a new company, how are they going to, how are we going to work with that new company? So, I think we have some missiles that are kind of being thrown at us right now.
Well, in terms of implementing our capital projects, if, you know, currently, we contract out for engineering support and we can contract out for more engineering support to, you know, for the limited time to oversee the completion of these capital projects.
Right, that'll be an additional cost, that's, yeah, okay.
Would be an additional cost, but that's, that's one way to accomplish it and, you it, and, you know, it's just recognizing that we've got a lot to get taken care of.
Oh, sure, I mean, I understand that, but the staff still has to oversee the consultants, and it, so I'd like to see how you think, how you can do it.
Okay. The, I have two more slides and I'll stop talking. This slide here is our general fund, available fund balance, as Mayor Nelson had just asked where we get the four hundred ninety-two. So we start out with the, based on the budget we have, it's two point four million that we have in fund balance, and then breaking down how we have, as of now, what our budget shows, we'll have one point five, five hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred in our reserve, that's the minimal. We went over all the designations, bringing it down to an available fund balance of four hundred and ninety-two thousand. And just as a FYI, the investment advisory committee has been researching over a long period of time, PARs, which is the Pension Agency Retirement Services, and they, there's a IRS ruling that section one fifteen trust can, it is basically for unfunded pension liability. How can we reduce that without sending our money to PERS and getting no interest? So the research has been done, and we're coming, we'll be giving you a staff, a full detailed staff report on the May meeting. But basically, what what we've been kind of tossing around is if we put a hundred thousand dollars into this PARs section one fifteen trust, we're gonna earn more interest, that money will reduce our unfunded liability with PERS, which will be taken fiscally, you know, being fiscally active on our PERS liability and not locking it into PERS, however, that money is an irrevocable trust. So once we put it there, we can't touch it unless we're paying our pension. So one of the things that I don't have in the budget, but, I mean, because it'll be council discussion at the twenty-third or direction now, I mean, you don't have all the details, but our goal was to put a hundred thousand dollars the first year, next year, another hundred thousand dollars for four years, that was the original game plan, granted, well, once we start getting into the deep of actually getting a contract and going forward, that could all change, but the the concept was putting in about four hundred thousand dollars, that would bring us up to being ninety percent funded, and that's kind of our goal.
That gives us some better investment vehicles.
Yes.
Yes, that's exactly the benefit, that's what the whole point of it.
Yeah, the government, the cities have to be governed by the government code, whereas the state and federal have recognized that the, once you get this IRS ruling, you have a little more leeway, and you can invest in a little more aggressive investments, I mean, not crazy investments, but interest-bearing investments versus what we have.
Not Vegas-style, but.
No Vegas-style.
But it's a designated purpose, once you set it there, it's there.
Right.
So it's pre-funding, it's pre-funding your unfunded, you know, actuarial liability.
If you pay the bill, you know you're gonna have to pay, so.
It's putting money toward.
Doing what PERS can't do.
Exactly, and.
In a more, it's a better investment to get us there.
Better vehicle.
And conceptually, what we'd be doing is to, kind of like an endowment, like if you put a hundred thousand dollars, just let's try not to touch that principal investment, and use the interest to reduce, every year, maybe pay a little bit more to PERS, or you know, whatnot, but continue that interest to to increase and reduce it, so.
Along those lines, when I read the minutes, it said that the the investment advisory committee was going to come to the council members individually and have meetings with them regarding that, and that, I've never been contacted regarding that.
Well, you were on the committee, and so I think what they were trying to do is educate, the concept for that was to educate both Councilman Pitts and Councilman Rossini, who have not been on the committee before, because now Mayor Nelson and Mayor Pro Tim Colacott are on the committee, so they're hearing it, and you were also on it for a while, so the impression was to make sure everybody kind of knew what was going on prior to the actual presentation. So if you would like.
I'm just saying, the minute.
My understanding was exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, I read the minutes, yeah.
They're gonna go down to individual council members that were not on the committee, and give them a briefing on it before it comes before the council.
Right.
Have you heard something?
And I know that Bill, Bill Underwood, a couple, a couple months ago, ran into me in the market, and he mentioned.
Who did?
Underwood, he ran into, it was several months ago, and I just remember, I didn't, that's when I went back to the minutes, but I never got a call from anybody to do anything.
I'll follow up on it, because they're supposed to talk to every council member prior to.
To get it from their, to get it from their perspective, I mean.
Well, we wanted to educate you before, brought it before.
It's important. I mean, I know, I know about it, but I do want to hear it from their words.
He is, I will tell you, the chair is extremely busy until Sunday.
Well, so am I.
I know, but I'm just just giving you an FYI, you will not hear from him once before Sunday, so.
I'll remind the chair that he's supposed to do that.
Right, he's on like five hundred committees.
Well, yeah.
So I think he's doing fifty-eight interviews by Friday.
We can, we can borrow.
Yeah, it's a long story, but, so, yeah, he definitely had mentioned that he hadn't been able to talk to everybody, but he will.
We can check him out.
I will follow him, and now, oh, I didn't.
You plan to bring this before the council in May then?
The twenty-third.
Do you need to bring that in?
We can bring it in June.
That's a lot of.
We can bring it in June.
Yeah, I said, that's a lot for us.
We don't want to bring it before the council, before you.
We'll, we'll bring it in, we'll slow it down and make sure everybody's briefed.
To do that, to brief everyone, so it's you have some complete understanding of it when it comes to the council, rather than spending a tired year trying to educate everyone.
Sure, that's cool.
Thought you'd do that.
No problem, we'll get that done.
Okay. And then the other issue was just potentially increasing the general fund reserve to the fifty percent goal, because right now, I just had the minimum, and since it's our goal to be at fifty percent, it was a potential available use for your fund balances, putting the whole fifty percent up.
I just don't think you have to tie up money in reserve not to spend it, I mean, we should have enough discipline that we don't spend the money.
Yeah, I would agree.
You know, rather than just putting it in reserve, we should have that kind of discipline that we just don't spend the money. You know, you say you're gonna have four hundred ninety-two thousand up here, if we go with this program of PARs, that's a hundred thousand.
Right.
It takes you down to three ninety-two.
Right.
Put more money in there, you're gonna have rather limited cushion left there. And we just, we just should have the discipline not to spend money without tying it up. We should.
We should, but it's an insurance policy, because council changes every two years, and, you know, four fifths is not, the reason you have a four fifths there is to make sure that you, we don't get a wild, you know, bug in our bonnet to turn around and say that we want to put a new facade on City Hall, you know, which we did because we needed, and I'm just using that as an example. I think that having a four fifths vote to take that kind of money out is prudent, and yes, we should be more, we should be reserved, and I understand that and have that, but that's why you have savings accounts and you have bank accounts that require two signatures, and I think that that's a safety factor for the residents to know that also, that it does take four fifths to get that money out. I mean, I'm certainly one hundred percent in support of putting the fifty percent reserve goal in, and I'm a hundred percent in support of putting in another, you know, forty thousand dollars and making it, I'd like to see at least ninety thousand or a hundred thousand put in that reserves. We're a small city, you know, if then the economy turns and something goes wrong, we're gonna need it. You know, property taxes are not gonna increase four percent again, we already know that, we know the income's coming down to years from now, the state's already made the accommodations for it, the county's already made accommodations for it, so we need to see what's in the future. That's my thoughts on that.
All right, that concludes my link.
I just disagree, I don't believe we should limit future council members, because I expect all future council members to be as responsible as we are. I do. I don't, I don't think that they'd be any less responsible, that we'd have to tie their hands. But that's just me. So where are we?
Now, we're here for your.
If you have questions or direction, we are next scheduled for June thirteenth.
Councilwoman Fasanelle expressed concern about you being able to do these projects. Could you come back to us maybe with.
Yeah, that's, we've got that in.
And tell us how you're going to do that.
Or if we can't do it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think that's important.
Not only the impacts, but let's, let's have a plan to get it done. Not only, because I think she raises some good concerns, but let's have a plan to get it done.
Right.
Okay, where there's a will, there's a way.
Is there, are there any changes or revisions that you would like to push through for the next, or me to implement?
I don't like that we've eliminated a staff person, I don't, I think that having, we don't have any staff. I mean, I come in here, and there's no one, there's no one in here half the week, so, you know, we had two part-time interns, and now we're only budgeting for one. We need to have staff here, if we want to continue to stay open Monday through Friday, which has, certainly has not been my, has not been my preference, I, large cities close on Friday or close half-day Friday, and that's not something that the councils in the past have wanted to do here, and that's okay, but to stay open Monday through Friday, eight to five, we need to have some bodies here to be able to accommodate people walk in the door and answer the phone.
And projects. Steve, has the front office been vacant during business hours?
No, we've had somebody here, and the councilwoman's correct, I mean, we're down to one, one person at a time, so if somebody's at the counter and a phone call, you have to excuse yourself and go answer the phone. We will be filling the, the office assistant position, that person will be starting, we've gone through a whole selection process and interviews and reference checks and whatnot, so that twenty-five, twenty-five hour budgeted position will be here, but it's still at times, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, there are maybe two people in the office, so we have to be very careful about who goes to lunch where, or if we go to lunch, sometimes if we work through.
Or anything else.
But it is the nature of the business, so we're, you know, we'll work through whatever. The logic of what we were planning was for, candidly, and I know we call them intern and it's not, but the part-time people of that level to not be running our office on a regular basis, that's not something that I felt comfortable with, because there's, there's probably, you know, there's business licenses being handled, and the public's being addressing issues, these are not what you would call seasoned, experienced people, they're very good, motivated, young, enthusiastic people, but in my mind, they should be doing project-specific types of things, such as automating our business license process, updating our website, projects that they can work on, that they can also help answer phones and do things, but they shouldn't be the primary source of, of response and interface to the public. So, I mean, not that that isn't, they're good, but that's where we're going.
The last two, we need people to be able to do some work, when the last two events that I've gone to, my reservations have been completely, they weren't even in my name. And although that's not your fault, but we haven't had staff here to even make adequate reservations for me to attend conferences, it's just been, so we need to have staff that you can rely on when you give them a task, and that's not an intern, so that's, that's my concern here, is that we do need to have staff to be able to take care of things. So.
But it's not really a reduction, he says dropping one intern, but he's hiring an officer assistant.
They're twenty-five hours, twenty-five hours, though.
Well, how, how many hours is an intern working?
The intern will work approximately twenty hours.
Right, so it's.
That's averaged out, I mean, depending on his class schedule or work schedule or whatever the project.
But no real reduction?
No, we had two though.
We had, was her name Bethany before? We got two interns, but he's gonna drop one intern and hire an officer assistant, so he still had the same two people. There's no staff reduction, is there?
The, as I understand it, again, this is sort of, some predates me, the initial intern was hired when one of the staff went out on the intern, I don't want to say that the part-time person, clarification, was hired when maternity, when person went on maternity leave, so they brought that person in, and so that person has stayed on board when the person came back from maternity. Then when the office assistant left in December, January, approximately, the other part-time person was brought on, so those two people have filled and stayed with us through a transition.
Right, but that was an issue even with our permanent office assistant, because she didn't work full-time, we didn't have a full-time person, so you come walking in here on Friday afternoon, or you come walking in here on Wednesday, or whatever, the two days, there's no, the only one here is the city manager.
Well, looking, looking at what.
And that's just wrong.
Well, looking at what we said earlier about coming back with the projects and how you plan to implement it and so forth, maybe what you look at is your staffing levels in your office there to determine what's the correct staffing level that you need to support everything that's going on in the city today and in the future, and that'd be part of your recommendation.
I'm buying, that's what the council wants.
I, I, I agree.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm suggesting that, because if you're gonna be, I mean, if we're gonna move forward with some of these initiatives and you're under staff, at some point in time, you may come back and ask for more help, I don't know. It's trying to be fair to you and your, and the current staff that we have today, that we don't overload them, that's all.
I think we've overloaded, we've overloaded the staff and our consultants at this point. The consultants certainly get paid, I'm a little worried about, I know, the, what's the firm that Akram works for, Civil Source?
Civil Source.
Because I read their contract at the same time that I read Lily Planning. I'm waiting to see how much money we're gonna be paying them, because they're working a tremendous amount of hours, it's not what we contracted for, maybe we need two of them, and it's kind of a concern, because they're working more than what we assigned them to do. Do we need to hire, I don't know, a part-time engineer to fulfill instead of paying, you know, Civil Source's prices? So that's, that's kind of, that's a concern when I see that we're depleting just a small amount of staff, we're not adding staff to it, we shouldn't be going backwards when we're trying to add a million dollars in capital improvement projects.
In my opinion, I think we, we're doing more with less in government, and we're becoming more efficient. I concur with Bill, I don't think we're losing a person, I think we're simply replacing a different person with a different role, but I don't see or hear the issue coming from our city manager, and I think we should proceed as, as we have it on the books right now.
Well, if you could come back with recommendations, and then with the final budget, we have to vote on it.
Is there any other direction you want to give them? Do you have enough?
I think we have lots to do between now and June thirteenth.
I would still like, you know, information from the guy on the storm drain is exactly what the East wants.
Yeah, no, we'll be, that's, we'll come back on the thirteenth, that's one of our notes here.
I don't know if that's enough, or should we just spend nothing on storm drains?
We'll, we'll come back with some sort of firmed-up number.
Don't say that, you're gonna really upset him. Really gonna upset him.
Storm drains, I'm sorry, Bob, but they're not, they, they, they don't, I don't think they're as sexy as you think they are.
Well, I just want to make sure that we don't have a much larger impact of somebody getting, one of our residents getting fucked up, so where we've got problems, you know, if we've got corrugated metal, more corrugated metal pipes, which I believe we do have around the city, if they need to be replaced or repaired in some fashion to prevent our residents from being flooded, we need to address that.
Michelle, you and Steve did a good job, thank you for.
Very much.
Appreciate it.
Michelle did most all of it. Michelle's in the office all the time.
One thousand dollars, right, nine hours.
Yes. Mike was hoping it was a thousand.
He's like payday.
Yeah, he is. Planning his vacation home.
So do, do we need another, we have another budget session scheduled?
We have one, and there's enough follow-up, even if we keep it brief, I think we probably would come back, because there's some uncertainty things before we make formal adoption.
Okay.
We have some stuff here that we need to, we need to review when you come back.
Good with that, I concur.
Is there any, like, anything that needs to be taken out, or there, I mean, besides the things that you've asked us to look into, has, is there any other changes based on the salary resolution, based on the detail that you were given in the budget that, because I have, I know you, everybody was being kind enough to wait for questions at the end, but is there anything that I need to be working on so that we have a pretty much complete draft at the thirteenth?
Well, at least we can answer questions on the thirteenth.
Well, not a complete, I mean, we, I think.
Right, no, no, there's always room for movement, but I, I mean, I would prefer to do it now than having two weeks to present.
Can you email me your presentation?
Yeah, PowerPoint, yeah.
PowerPoint?
Yeah, we'll email it to everyone.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
We were amending it until early this evening.
I know, that's how it happened last year, too, so I remember, so if you email that to me.
Yeah, we'll dip that up.
Okay, is there anything else?
We can actually make that, since it is a public, we could put it on our website.
I think Pam would like a copy.
Yeah.
Probably some other folks did.
Just put a big draft, just put a big draft stamp on each one, please.
Superposed draft.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Did we have any public comment before we leave?
Who's the, who's the investor that you have for?
Oh, PARs.
PARs.
Yes.
For the.
That's the Public Agency Retirement System.
Who is that investor? Comment, who is that investor?
Well, they have a couple, that, what we were going to be bringing to council, I guess now in June, is recommendation to, you can, you can select your own investors, they have, they have, I think it's Highmark, is it Highmark? I think is their...
That's one of the ones that does something, that's the thing, but PERS is a group that does it. What they do, they set up what's called 115 trust, that you can put your money into